I didn't hear you talk on the phone.
No, no.
I didn't see it.
Ladies and gentlemen, if we could please call to order the regular city commission meeting for the city of Deerfield Beach Tuesday, June 18th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Houdak.
Here.
Commissioner Parnas.
Here.
Commissioner Preston.
Here.
Vice Mayor Drowski.
Here.
Mayor Gantz.
Here. If we could have everyone please stand for a moment of silence, and in our moment of silence, if we could also keep former commissioner and former mayor Sylvia Porter in our thoughts, and next we'll have our pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have approval of the city commission agenda for June 18th, 2019.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Our awards and recognition. Our very first one is for someone we're very proud of in the city of Deerfield Beach. Betsaida Betsy Nina, our Deerfield Beach Student Scholar-Athlete of the Month for May 2019. Betsy Nina is a 7th grade student, honor roll student at Deerfield Beach Middle School with a 3.8 GPA. Betsy is an active member of the Deerfield Beach Middle School soccer, basketball, and track teams, and she's recently been named the soccer team's MVP for the year. Betsy is not only an athlete, she's also very active at Deerfield Beach Middle School, participating in city activities, including the presentation of colors at school events, MLK Parade, Winter Wonderland, Quiet Waters Park Car Show, reading to the Deerfield Beach Elementary students, the mayor's chess challenge, the school cleanups, and the school open houses. Additionally, Betsy is the international baccalaureate program with the BSO Explorer Cadet Program. Upon graduating high school, Betsy plans to enlist in the US Marines and pursue a nursing degree. Please join us in congratulating Betsy on her accomplishment of receiving City of Deerfield Beach Student Scholar-Athlete of the Month. Thank you very much. Next up, we have our chief, Chief Remlow, Broward Sheriff's Office, to give our Employee of the Month for our district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city commissioners, vice mayor. Deputy Wellington actually is delayed slightly by the weather, but I do want to commend him for his hard work this last month. We have numerous burglaries that had been happening over in the Tivoli area and also in other sections along Dixie Highway, car burglaries, and every once in a while we get hit with them, you know, significant ways. And it was his proactive patrol that led him to keep patrolling the area with lights off, kind of hidden, and in unmarked vehicles as well. And on one of those nights, he came upon a vehicle that was later implicated in numerous car burglaries, not only in Deerfield Beach, but those people also were involved in Fort Lauderdale, also in Fort Lauderdale. And we tracked back using some of our LPR data to tie them in with some of the burglaries here, and also with burglaries in Fort Lauderdale. Our burglary apprehension team also became involved, and we surveilled the vehicle until we finally were able to take those folks into custody. And numerous car burglaries in excess of 24 have been cleared through Deerfield and the city of Fort Lauderdale as well. And it's because of his attention to detail and his proactiveness in trying to combat the burglaries that were happening here in Deerfield, that Deputy Wellington is recognized as Employee of the Month for Deerfield Beach.
Excellent. We have item number three, and this is in recognition of a 19-year veteran of the city of Deerfield Beach and an outstanding employee, Mr. Roger Soles. Roger began his career at the city of Deerfield Beach within the Department of Fire Rescue Maintenance Division in October of 2000 as a mechanic. In 2011, Mr. Soles was transferred to the Division of Fleet Management, serving in various capacities since that time. Mr. Soles currently holds a position of Master Certified Truck Technician, and has been an integral part of the city's Fleet Management Division. On June 28th, 2019, Roger Soles will be retiring from the city of Deerfield Beach. Mr. Soles' leadership, his can-do attitude, or his approach to his daily work will be solely missed by those of us here in the city, and his colleagues within the Department of Sustainable Management and the Fleet Management Division. We wish Roger all the best in his retirement, and we thank him for his years of dedicated service. So for Roger, this certificate of recognition is for you. Thank you. Roger, if you don't mind standing over there, we're going to do one more, and then we're going to do photos over there with you, if that's all right.
No.
No, if you stand right over there next to Rebecca, if that's okay. We have Mike Brown here tonight. Our head of ocean rescue, Mr. Mike Brown, I'd like to have you come on down, please. One just to show off your uniform, I think that's really the main reason right now. I'm going to have you help us hand these out, if that's all right, and speak in a minute, if that's okay. This certificate of recognition that we have here tonight is for some of our ocean rescue members, our ocean rescue lifeguards, and for those of you here in the city of Deerfield Beach, know how phenomenal they are, not just here in the city, not in the county, but nationwide. Tonight, we honor several members for a life-saving rescue. On Saturday, May 18th, 2019, BSO Fire Rescue responded to the report of an adult drowning with CPR in progress, in process. It was an exceptionally busy day at the beach when bystanders alerted ocean rescue lifeguards that a man who'd been swimming by the pier was not moving. They quickly responded and did what they are trained to do every day. The man was pulled from the water, and CPR was initiated on the shoreline. Fire Rescue was alerted immediately, however, during that response time, ocean rescue had placed the patient on a backboard, loaded him on their ATV, and continued CPR efforts. When ocean rescued arrived, they were able to drive the patient from the shoreline to the sidewalk while continuing CPR. This all contributed to a very smooth and effective patient transfer to the rescue truck. This incident was an example of a great teamwork and two separate groups of first responders working together to achieve a positive outcome for the patient. Please join us in recognizing these lifeguards for an outstanding job as they played a key role in this patient's survivability, thanks to their care and efforts. Tonight, we honor Francis Slight, Brittany Sullivan, Tyrone Backers, Jeff Noel, and Marcelo Rios and Dylan Arkiewicz are not here tonight, but we congratulate them all. Chief Brown, before we embarrass them with photos, do you mind saying a few words?
You know, if you ask any of these lifeguards, or anybody in public safety, you know, to be recognized, they're just going to say they were doing their jobs. For us to have the lieutenant of the BSO Fire, Josh King, who was the head paramedic on scene, for him to recognize the effort that they put forth, and, you know, Chief Pelletary passing that on to our interim city manager, David Santucci, you know, it is an honor. You know, these guys say they're just doing their job, but they're out there every day, it's not just sitting out there in the sun. We're preparing ourselves for probably our busiest day of the year, 4th of July, and we want to keep everybody safe out there. So the teamwork they displayed, for me as a chief, I get chills. You try to set up a structure operationally, you know, the initial lifeguards responded, I got my supervisor, Jeff Noel, lifeguard specialist, him and Tyrone Backers, backed them up with the advanced equipment, and we did what we did, you know, and for fire rescue to come out there with their heavy stretchers and all their equipment, it's hard to go on the soft sand. For us to transfer that patient from the water, get them up there onto the road ready for them, it was just a smooth transition. So we're very blessed that this gentleman survived. Thank you, guys.
Commissioner Preston?
Mayor, if it meets your approval and the commission approval, I would like to move up items number 20 and 21 on the agenda for tonight.
I think that would, I think we need to move 19 along with that also, is that possible?
Would be 19, yes, 19, 20, 21.
Yeah, that's correct. I know we have, we have some family members who have come a long way from out of town, and I'm sure they want to spend their quality time with themselves rather than joining us for the rest of the meeting here tonight, so it seems to make some sense. If we, city attorney, if you could go with item number 19 first?
Sure. Item number 19 is resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending Resolution 2013-073 to revise the procedure relating to the naming of city streets, providing for conflicts, and an effective date.
City manager, any comments, commission comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have Vice Mayor Drowski, did you want to make a motion, or you?
Comments.
Okay. If you can hold your motions, I don't know. Okay.
I have no objection to 19, 20, or 21, but I'm just curious as to why we're doing this procedure, what came up, what is the rush to do this, because I did some research into this, and in 2005, the city created a city memorial board, and the responsibilities of the memorial board were to, for the naming of streets, parks, and other public facilities. That was in 2005, and 2011, I believe it is, 2011, the city disbanded the memorial committee, and instead made the historical society responsible for naming streets only. It did away with parks and other public facilities. And Commissioner Preston and Mayor Gantz were both on the board at that time and voted for that change. And now, today, we're being asked to change the procedure once again, so it seems like, for all of these years since 2005, it's been very important to have public input in the process, so much so that we changed it to this historical society, and now we just seem to be, you know, eliminating, you know, with commission approval, that one particular layer. So I don't know why we're speeding the process up to eliminate this historical society approval. I understand that if they're slow in getting back to us, that we should have the ability to do what we want, but it seems like, historically speaking, it's been the will of the commission to have public feedback, and I don't know why we're skipping that process.
Commissioner Preston?
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Drowski, the, all of the application work and the required paperwork were put in, in a timely manner. It was not met, and it was on a delay process, and in that delaying, we were just getting behind and behind and behind, and so that brings us to where we are today. It wasn't that there's a rush, the fact is that the system that we have in place did not respond quickly.
Did you want to follow up?
I did, so, I mean, I don't have a problem with that, if the historical society is not going to follow through on its duties that have been delegated to it from the commission, then maybe we should put a timeframe on it. It seems like their input was important in the process. So I looked at the calendar, because there's a 40, a 45-day requirement in the ordinance that's being proposed to us tonight, and it seems to me that if you, that, depending on the way that the calendar lays out, that could only be one meeting for the historical society, the way, however you count those 45 days, so there's only two months back-to-back that I saw that had 31 days in it. So to me, you'd want to at least give them, you know, two months' ability to do it. If you're limiting them to one month, then, then we probably don't even need their approval process at all of this. If we're only going to give them one month to approve it, so I think we should give them at least two months, which would be, you know, a minimum of 62 days, depending, again, on how the calendar plays out, because, again, historically, it seems to me that at least that, that public feedback is important in this, in this process, unless we want to do away with the delegating to the historical society altogether, and then it becomes a moot issue.
Commissioner Preston, and the city manager?
Vice Mayor, the proposed resolution will allow that if they don't meet in that 45-day period, it will allow us to be able to go forward. And so, you know, that's, that's all that's really being discussed here. So if that, if that meeting does not take place, then the process is not stalled, it can continue.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Vice Mayor, city commissioners. The, the point of this resolution was not to, just to clarify, was not to take away the, the powers of the historical society to make that recommendation to you, but to, in times when they cannot meet outside of the, the actual days requirement, Vice Mayor, is really just to allow for these to go before you in a more timely manner. And, and, and just, just to be clear, this is not absent of the historical society recommendation. They were able to provide that recommendation via emails, but I believe it was the city attorneys that want to speak for him, but I believe, and just tell me if I'm misspeaking, but it was the city attorney's recommendation that they should be, when they're making these recommendations to you, it should be done in an in-person meeting, and so, in lieu of them not being able to do that, this process would allow for this recommendation to come before you with, you know, the historical society's emailed approval.
That's accurate, I did make that, I did issue that opinion, and also just wanted to point out, this is an option for the commission. So if they didn't meet within 45 days, and you want to give them more time, you could, you're not forced to act on it, it gives you the option to proceed in the event that the historical society was unable to meet within 45 days of the receipt of the completed application.
Commissioner Houdak?
As I read it, it did not seem that we were excluding the historical society, it was that we were allowing the use of an email as opposed to a formal meeting, or an in-person recommendation. So, if, did I misread that?
So you did receive emails as part of this. It was my opinion that, that they needed a formal meeting to vote, because it's part of your decision-making process. Ultimately, they're making a recommendation to the commission. So what this does is, like, in a circumstance like that, where you got emails, or even if they didn't give you emails, the city commission could have the option to move forward with or without the email recommendation from the historical society.
Okay.
In other words, this is not contingent upon receiving that email.
I, I think the historical society should continue to be included in the decision, but we should be allowed to use their email response in lieu of an in-person response. That, that would be my preference.
Yeah, understood. So I guess then, then, then that's an issue that I'm raising, and bringing to the attention. Because I, I don't believe, and this is my, giving you my opinion, that legally that should happen, be emailed. They should have a meeting the same way that you guys can't act via email because they're making a recommendation to you. It's going beyond fact-finding. They're saying, "We've looked at this," and gives the public the opportunity as well to participate in that.
Look, the reason we went to this system is because we felt it was a better system. The previous one was not really working in the way, in the best interest, and was a little bit controversial going back to that time period. I, I think the 62 days was fine. We're not obligated at that. You know, we, we have, we have some flexibility here to do this. If Commissioner Preston, we have a motion on the floor to accept it as it is. If Commissioner Preston would change it to 62 days, would you be willing to do that? Or do you want to keep it at 45?
I want to keep it at 45.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion for 45. Do we, Vice Mayor?
I don't see why we need to be, you know, inflexible on the, on the issue here. I mean, we've compromised before. I don't want to see this not get a majority vote because we can't agree on a time period here.
And?
And historically speaking, I said, it seemed like it was very important, in reading the minutes from years past, that the historical society be involved in the, in the process.
Well, I'm sorry.
No, I said, I understand if they don't act timely, then we certainly can, can, can take action, but it seems as though it was the will of the commission before to have them involved.
Well, I, I think we definitely want them involved, and I think, I think that's what everyone's saying up here. You know, them not meeting one time and us rushing. I, I don't, I never see what the rush is on these types of things with street renaming. It's rare that, you know, the sense of urgency usually isn't there. But if for some reason they can't, and it goes to an extended time beyond two months is, you know, we need to move things along. So, 62 days is what you came up for, the two months. Can we do 62 days, or are we still going with the 45? Because I don't see a second for the 45. City Manager, do you have a comment?
Thank you, yes. And just through those email communications that, that was copied on, you know, the, the historical society does not meet over the summer, so it's my understanding that they will not be meeting until September.
Okay.
Which is more than 60 days.
We have a motion? I'm sorry.
I can amend my motion to the 62 days.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have, roll call, please.
Commissioner Houdak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item number 20 is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, changing the name and designation of certain right-of-way on Southwest 11th Street, from Southwest 2nd Ave. to Southwest 3rd Ave., to Robert L. Vaughn Senior Street in recognition to his contributions to the community, providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Before we do that, I think we have to open to the public.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Yes. My name is Gloria Cunnigan. I'm Robert Vaughn's daughter.
And just your address for the record, please.
520 Southwest 11th Drive, Deerfield Beach, Florida, 3441. And I would like to say that my father, matter of fact, he would have been 100 years old September 25th of this year, and he has paved over approximately half of Broward County, and he's been a public figure in the community churches. And I just want to say thank you all for listening and opening some time for him to at least have that street naming, and I'm, I'm just pleased to have it. And matter of fact, his son's birthday is today, so I'm a little shaken, the one that was named after him. So it was like, this was coming all together, and it was like, well, it's God.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else from the public here to comment? I'm going to close this to the public, then. We have a motion from Commissioner Preston. Is there any discussion before we look for a second?
Second.
We have a second. Commissioner Parnas, roll call, please.
Commissioner Houdak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item number 21 is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, changing the name and designation of certain right-of-way on Southwest 6th Street, from Southwest 2nd Avenue to Dixie Highway to Bishop Leroy Strobridge Street, excuse me, in recognition to his contributions to the community, providing for an effective date.
Commission comments before I open up to the public? Not seeing any, I'm going to open it to the public. We have some people that have signed up. Pastor Dennis Fullmore, please.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for this opportunity to stand before you all in behalf of the naming of, or the renaming of the street of Bishop Leroy Strobridge. I believe it in my heart, and I want y'all to understand about this, this man. In 1945, he became a member of a church that was there beginning, way back when there weren't even paved roads. And from 1945 up until his leaving and called home to God, he served not only the church under numerous pastors, but he served the community. He worked at numerous funeral homes. He was a part of the church being named the heroes of the community because of his efforts in leading people off the street. And his whole life, his whole legacy, is something that, if you knew him and knew his contributions to the city of Deerfield. I was born in Deerfield myself, and from a child at the same church for almost 60 years, all I've known is what he's done, and what he's given, and, and the things that he's done, the lives that he's helped. And I could go on and on. And he was just a great man, and to know him, it would be an honor. And I think that his accolades, his, his duty to society, not very often we have opportunity to come across someone such as this, who, who did not talk about separation. He talked about people coming together. He endured a lot of things, but one thing he always told us, that he loved this city, and he gave his life for this city. And, and as a pastor, he pastored me. And, and I had opportunity to intern everything that I learned, I learned from him. And now I had opportunity to intern pastor him. When he lost his first son to a car accident, my mom had me to stay with him in his house to help out with his wife, who's there now, with the little kids, while he had to go and continue to serve the community. And, and I can just speak so much about him, and we love him. We love what he's done for us. And the reason you all are here today, all this platform here, is part of what, what he done, some of the groundwork that he done. I can look up and I see the makeup here, because all he spoke about was unity. All he spoke about was the love that a strong community can overcome any obstacle. And I'm just glad to stand before you, and I'm not just saying this because I'm a pastor there, but I'm saying this because I'm a longtime resident, and I've known him all my life. And I know that the city would be proud, and for those to come to see his name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mason Strobridge?
Good evening. I'm Nathan Strobridge. I'm the eldest son of Bishop Leroy Strobridge. And thanks to the opportunity you allowed me to come up here and speak with you.
Thank you. You just give your address for the record, please.
My address is 14629 Weber Way. That's in Woodbridge, Virginia. I flew in here. I got asked to come and speak on the part of my family about my father. You know, really, the only thing I can really say about my father is records speak for himself. You can bring the community up here, it'll speak for itself. One thing I carried with me through my whole military career, I spent 24 years in the military. One of the biggest things I carried through him, be true to yourself, treat others with respect, selfless service, and always, always give God praise. And I carried that through 13 deployments, for them to be in combat. And I'm here speaking to you, giving recognition that my father's, that street should maybe be named after my father. As a husband, as a father, as a member of the community, he really loved this community. Pastor talked about, he really did love this community. There's many days that I know, I was out playing football for the Packer Rallies, he was out doing something for the community, not at my games. At the time, when you're young, you don't understand that. Like, well, you know, he's doing all this for the community, but it was a reason. And the pastor spoke of it, it's about the unity, that everyone is up there assisting, talking about this unity in the community, bringing it together. So, you know, I hope we, the, the palacy for, that this move forward and naming this for my father. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Janice Fullmore Tigner?
Janice Fullmore Tigner, 1090 Southwest 4th Terrace, Deerfield Beach, Florida. Thank you, City of Deerfield Beach, Historical Society, and our commission board. Bishop Leroy Strobridge, he was not only a father, he was a mentor, he was a pastor, he was a confidant, he was a counselor, he was a man of the cloth, and he did, not only did he say things, but he meant what he said, and he stuck to the words that he said. Bishop Strobridge knew me before I knew myself. I'm a member of the Church of the Living God, and I, he knew me before I became a member there. My brother is now, since, been the pastor over seven and a half years. And there's many couples that have been ministered to, counseled to, through Bishop Strobridge and his wife. And I can say from my observance, not one of you seen that, that I know of that come back divorced because of their mentoring, because of their tutelage. He served our community in many, many capacities. Our, we've had many pastors in our church, but we have not had one that has served in ministry over 60 years. So to that, we're thankful, we're blessed, we're grateful. And in closing, for this, we would be honored, blessed, very proud, but most of all, forever thankful to the City of Deerfield Beach and the Historical Society and the City Commission to find it in favor of the Church of the Living God and the Strobridge family to have Southwest 6th Street renamed Bishop Leroy Strobridge Street. The street may be short in footage, but his steps run long, and his works were widely spread abroad. Thank you very much.
Gloria Battle?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the Commissioners. My name is Gloria Battle. I live at, what do I live at? 1240 South 6th Way, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I'm here tonight in support of this. I have known, or Mr. Strobridge knew me all my life. I grew up under his being in the neighborhood. And one thing that people seem to forget, especially the Church of the Living God, he was not Mr. Strobridge to us, he was Superman. Okay? And if this, if this, if this plaque could say Reverend Strobridge, and somehow put under it Superman, that's how the people in the community remember him. Superman because he was a very tolerant person, very tolerant to the point of calling for unity at every effort or during every time that he met you, he was always talking about unity, and unity in this community. I am grateful that this is being put forth by the church. Thank you all. On his, the, at his passing, this city did a very nice proclamation, and, and I gave some words during his funeral, and I, I am glad to see this come forward. Only thing that I would ask, Mr. Mayor, is that once, if you all pass this tonight, that you move with posthaste in terms of putting the sign up, because I can remember with Daniel Lawson, Sergeant Daniel Lawson, I don't even know if that plaque has been put up yet. So make sure that we do put it up in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that cares to speak on this item? I'm going to close it to the public. Commission?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion, and a, from Commissioner Preston, second, Commissioner Parnas. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Houdak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Congratulations. At this time, next, we have our quasi-judicial hearings. If anyone would like to exit, we'll give you just a brief moment to exit before we start our quasi-judicial public hearings.
That's good.
City Attorney, if you want to go and get started?
Sure. Item number fives, item number five is a major site plan modification to amend phasing and landscaping on the previously approved site plan submitted by Fairway Memorial Properties LLC, application number 11-CF-38, revision one. The applicant is here, and I believe has a presentation?
Yes, absolutely. Just come forward.
Thank you. Dennis Mealy, 200 East Broward Boulevard, Lauderdale.
Mr. Mealy, before you go, if, if, city clerk has something she needs to announce?
Oh, sure.
Pursuant to ordinance 2009-006 Deerfield Beach Code of Ethics ordinance, campaign contributions were made by Mr. Dennis Mealy and the applicant, and all are outlined in the agenda backup.
Thank you. Mr. Mealy?
Thank you.
And so I don't have to interrupt you one more time, although I think I just did. Mr. Mealy, can you address whether or not you waive quasi-judicial, please?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a few slides to show real quick. I know that some of this is going back several years, so some of the commission members...
If you could speak directly into the microphone.
Sorry, is that better?
Is it, is it on? Should be. Believe it or not, we actually want to hear from a lawyer tonight, so bear with this moment.
Maybe I'll just talk loud.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
So this plan was originally approved in 2011. If you've been out to the site lately, you'll see that we're underway. If we could go to the next slide. So this is showing you on the left, the cemetery parcel, and on the right, I think you're now calling it Marty Popolski Park, if I understand correctly.
Correct.
So that was originally, of course, the old Tavishana Golf Course. My client, Mr. Little, owned both parcels, dedicated the eastern parcel to the city, and then, of course, received approval to build the cemetery and the western parcel. We go to the next slide. So when we went through the process in 2011, there was a staff recommendation... So when we went through the process in 2011, there was a staff recommendation, the applicant asked that the recommendation be a little different, went to the Planning and Zoning Board, Planning and Zoning Board did approve a modification to the recommendation, staff then revised the agenda backup before it came to City Commission to have these conditions that you see on the screen right now. I'm going to show a diagram in a minute that'll show where Phase 1 and future phases are so we can put it in perspective. If we go to the next slide. Thank you. So this was the site plan that was approved at the time, and I don't know if you can see it, but there's a little cul-de-sac on the left-hand side, and that was the dividing line between what we called at that time Phase 1 and Phase 2. I know it says 1A and 1B here, but it ended up becoming 2 at some point. I'm not sure how, but it did. And so you see on this plan, it was approved in a very specific way, that on the edges of the property, the west, east and west edges, where you see where it says dry retention, that was all buffer areas, and then inside of that, you see that road that runs north and south, and then inside of that, it says flush markers. What that means is gravestones that are flat on the ground, they're not vertical. And then when you got inside of that, you see where it says upright memorials, so those would be regular vertical gravestones. And then when you got inside of that, you had buildings, mausoleums, our office, et cetera. So if we could go to the next slide, please. So what we've done now is just taken on the left is that same site plan that was approved in 2011, and then we were showing you what we would like to do in order to comply with what we are trying to comply with from that original motion. So you see on the right is the new version of the plan. Now, what is different about those two? There are some very minor differences in the road alignment coming in at the southeast corner of the site. I think you can see that we slid the road over a little bit, so we had room for good landscaping on both sides, so we could create a nice entrance. And that probably should have been done back in 2011, but for some reason it wasn't. So those kinds of issues, I think we've already handled administratively with staff, sliding the road over a little bit, there's a building footprint that changes a little. What we're really talking about now is landscaping. And when we showed that condition of approval that was up on the screen a few minutes ago, it wasn't as clear as it could have been, or we probably wouldn't be here today. But what we're trying to do is the following. If you look at the left-hand drawing, what you see in green was Phase 1, what you see in yellow was Phase 2. And then the perimeter oak trees every 40 feet apart is what you see in that orange stripe going around the sides and the top of the drawing. Now, if you go over to the right, you see that Phase 1 has now gone up both sides of the property pretty significantly, so that the commitment is to get that landscaping in sooner. And the area in orange you see has become smaller because those oak trees were planted every 40 feet apart, but now our effort is to screen more of our neighbors sooner. Now, if you want the next slide, please. Okay, so I took all the Latin names and everything off this, hopefully it's not too confusing, but let me show you what we're showing. So this is the buffer requirement for landscaping, not the landscaping requirement for the interior of the site, that's different. That's a different section, subsection of the code. This is just the buffer. So you'll notice that what was required by code is 232 trees. So it's, you know, I think it's trees every 40 feet on center or whatever it is. And then what you see we're doing, what was approved, is 1,158 trees, so many, many times more than the general code requirement. And if you look at what we're, in the last two columns, again, just go with the trees, you see it's still 1,158 trees, at proposed size at planting and size in two years. So if you look at where we've taken these numbers and put yellow highlighting around the numbers, you'll see what is different. So for example, if you look at the live oak row, which is the top row, you'll see that the code would require a tree to be 14-foot high at the time of planting, that's the oak tree. If it's what's called an ornamental tree, then it would be 10 feet high at the time of planting. So you notice that on our approved plan, we have the 14-foot live oaks, which is the same as the code, although we have, we only have the same number. We have the 10-foot slash pine, which is the same as the code, although we have 636 of them that weren't really required, but they were on our plan, so we have to stick with it. And then we have 280 of these hollies, and again, not required by code, but was on the approved plan. So now if you go over to the next column, and I could do the same thing for all the ground cover and everything too, but you guys can read the chart, I don't want to spend too much time. So at the size of planting, what we're proposing to do is to plant 10-foot oak tree instead of the 14, but the concept is by the time we're doing any work in the area where these trees are, they will have grown to an appropriate height. And the same thing with the slash pine, where you see it's a 10-foot height, we're suggesting eight, and then two years it should grow to 13. Now, I'm going to show you pictures in a minute of some of the oak trees we already planted at the lower height and how they've grown in three years' time. So the other items you see here, wherever it's outlined in yellow, that's where we've modified the size of the plant at the time of planting, but we have not removed one single plant from the list of plants approved on the site plan. If we could go to the next one. So this is just giving you some, you know, how will it look when it's first planted? How would it look in two years? How would it look in five years? So you see the first planted on the upper left, the two years the upper right, and the five years the lower. And so this is just taking a typical 100-foot long section of the perimeter and showing how it would look. If we go to the next one. And this is a planned view of the same thing. I can spend more time on these if you want, but I sometimes file them, unless you're a landscape architect, some of these drawings don't mean a lot. If we can go to the next one. And then one of the other things that we're doing is along the eastern boundary of the site, we're going to have what we're calling the King David Garden. So this will be a portion of the cemetery set aside for the Jewish faith. And it's my understanding, I'm not an expert on this, but that the religious laws sometimes require a separate entrance and that sort of thing, and that's what we're doing. If we go to the next slide. So this is showing along the western property line where we're near the seven-story buildings to our west, this is what these trees looked like when they were planted at the smaller size a couple of years ago. And then if we go to the next slide, you'll see what they look like today. And then I think if we go to the next slide, just to give it perspective, here's a gentleman actually happens to be sitting in the second row. We originally put on the slide that he was a six-foot tall person, but it turns out he's six-foot four, so we adjusted it. And I'm just showing you, you see the trees have grown. I mean, we put the person in front of it so you get a perspective of how tall they are. So we don't see any reason why the same thing will not happen with the rest of the plant material. If we go to the next slide. This is a mausoleum that we built, it's not really relevant to the presentation tonight, but I just thought I would show it. Now, as we've talked about this with staff, I've spent many times on the telephone recently with the City Attorney, I think we've come up with something that is not necessarily everything we've asked for, but may be a good compromise. So should I go into that, or is it better for somebody else to do it? Okay.
You have the floor, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you.
It's up to you.
Just want to make sure. So what we had proposed was for the, Mr. Power, can we go back to the slides where you had the two site plans side by side in color? There we go. So what we're really talking about now is everything in the green area is going to be planted by the end of the summer. A lot of it's already there, we're planting it now. So what we're really talking about is what happens in the yellow area where you're along those orange line of oak trees. Because remember, all we're talking about tonight is the perimeter buffer landscaping. The interior stuff, there's no dispute about it. We understand what we have to do, the staff understands, and we'll do it. So what we're saying is the shrubs and ground cover that go under those trees shown in orange, we were proposing to start that work in two years and finish it in four. And the suggestion that's come back to us is we'd really like to see you start it in one year and finish it in year three, so one and two instead of two and two. And then also, we've been asked to post some sort of security, a bond, a lot of credit, whatever it may be. I believe that the staff was able to compute if these trees were 14 feet versus 10 feet, how do we know you're going to let them grow to 14 feet? Well, the best way is for us to post a bond to guarantee that that happens. And I understand that the bond amount was based on the cost of buying 14-foot trees. There would have been, I think it's 232 of them, I understood that the dollar amount was about $500 per tree, which comes up to, I think, 200, I mean, 112,500, is that the right number, I think?
I believe that's correct.
And so what we would suggest is that we will post that security with the city, and you can make sure that you go out there and look at the trees, that they've grown the way we said. If they did, then you release the bond at the end of the timeframe. If they grow up there sooner, we may come back and say, hey, they're already 14 feet, can we get a partial release on the bond? But all of that, we will work out with your staff and your attorney. Now, let me say this, that there are a number of things in the backup tonight that talk about items to be presented to the commission, and so that's what we're doing now. One item I just want to mention very quickly, you have a tree mitigation fund. If you remove more trees than you plant, and I'm oversimplifying, it's a little more complicated than that, then you have to pay money. So in 2011, when this plan was approved, it was recognized that the staff won't really know until we get to Phase 2, are we replacing all the trees? So what was said in 2011 is that issue is still out there, and if we don't plant enough trees, then we're going to owe a fee. I think if we planted nothing, the fee was something in excess of $400,000. We believe, based on the rest of our planting on the project, we won't be short at all, and we won't owe a fee, but that's up to your landscape people here to verify that I'm right about that. And if we owe the fee, we'll pay it. And it's my understanding, the fee is set aside in your code as a specific number based on what you're, kind of tree you're missing, so it's not a judgment call as to how much, it's only a judgment call as to whether you put in the right number. So anyway, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just get clarification on one point, Mr. Mealy, and some of our discussions, you said, I know you wanted, I think your client requested the two years with an additional two years for the growth to occur.
Right.
Now, you said one year with two years additional to complete it. I just want to declare, the one year is you're going to install the plant, required plant material within one year.
Yes.
All of it on the perimeter buffer.
Right.
And then you're going to get two years for it to grow to that height, and then the bond is to secure if it doesn't?
That's exactly right.
That's your understanding as well, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And remember, we're talking about the perimeter landscape, because the areas in yellow, as we work in those areas, we'll plant around them, because you don't want to be doing something and smashing all the plants you just planted. So anyway, that's what we're proposing to do.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Commission comments before we open it to the public? Open it to the public, we have Kathy Barker signed up.
Hi, Kathy Barker, 4881 Northwest 18th Ave., Deerfield Beach. I know I live in the community of Crystal Lake. It was a big procedure for us to get this all approved, approved, and Mr. Little getting, you know, listening to us and all of that. We are just concerned, you know, I see the line where the trees are going to go, but they had promised us 50 feet burned, meaning raised, so that the homeowners will not literally be looking out at the cemetery, they're just this raised berm. So that is our concern, whether they're trying to not do that, we really still want to see that berm done. And just for your information, they have not been keeping up with what they promised us, because along that fence, the back fence where that orange line is, trees have grown into the fence, they're falling over people's homes, people keep calling code enforcement, they don't trim the trees, they need to trim, but they're ruining the fence that's back there. So they haven't done what they've told us they would do, such, so far. So we were concerned, are they going to, are they not going to fulfill all of the things that they have suggested to us? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jim McGarry.
Jim McGarry of 1442 Southeast 6th Street, Deerfield Beach, Florida. Gentlemen, not the lecturer on this, because you know variances and the technicalities associated with that. There's always a big problem giving variances because there's ambiguous areas for compliance or justifying variances. But one part of the variance request seems to be consistent, it's financial. When attorneys represent their clients and ask for variances, generally the motivation is financial. Now, many of you weren't around when this Crystal Lake thing came about, but it was extremely complicated. The residents in that area, which I am not, were very concerned about the ultimate outcome of this project, and now they're coming back and asking you to deviate from one of the major considerations that they got the initial approval for and said, we will do it at 14 feet. It's quite interesting, now they're saying, we will put in 12 feet, and then five years from now, or two years from now, we'll come back, and you have to, the city's got to go out, inspect, and make sure it's 14 feet, so that they can recover their bond, or whatever they're calling it, okay? So it's adding more enforcement to the city to justify them saving money. They're making a gamble, gentlemen. They're making a gamble, saying, we think it's going to get there, and we're going to save, I missed the number, $200,000, whatever that number was. That's what their gamble is. If I were them, I'd be gambling too. But the bottom line is, their initial, official approval on this was predicated on this whole project, they were taking one section of it, but it was that section, among other key sections, that made the overall approval acceptable. So please, when you look at the variances, weed through the presentation and find out what the motivation is. If the vote, and as you know, variances are justified on hardship. What is the hardship? Yes, financial hardship. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. We have Robert Freund. Sir, if I butchered your last name, my apologies.
Everybody does. I'm used to it. Bob Freund, or Robert Freund, 1700 Northwest 48th Place. I'm also the president of the Crystal Lake Golf Villas 2 Homeowners Association. To be really honest, the biggest concern that I have as I come this evening is that we had to come to a meeting of the commission to find out what the variances were and what would like to be done, when we've been trying to be really good neighbors all through this experience of converting the golf course to a cemetery. It was actually one of our residents that had the idea that it should be a cemetery. So we don't have a problem with that, but we do have a lot of concerns as to changes coming about now. And to be really honest, if we'd had the time to sit down and talk about all this, we may have been able to come and endorse it. But at this point, our residents are really concerned about changing the height of the trees and things like that, and are they going to get their buffer, and what's it going to look like when it's all said and done? From what I understand, there is no berm in the end, from what I've seen. I've seen landscaping buffers, but I don't see a berm like we had talked about before. So it just goes to show that throughout this entire process, the community hasn't really been able to be involved, and I understand some of that to a degree, but it really would have worked a lot better if we could have worked together. And I would hope moving forward, we might be able to do things like that. But we understand, trust me, Crystal Lake Golf Villas 2 understands trees. We got hit with the trees that we had to plant, and my suggestion was that we come and we get the nice little trees at the giveaway for Arbor Day, and you can come back in three, four years and see how big our trees are. And now what I'm hearing basically is that the golf course is asking for the same thing that we asked for when we were told that we had to plant 100 trees this year. We're planting 100 trees to the caliper and to the height that you requested, or you required us to do, and we would simply ask that that be given the same recognition and the same consideration, when we're not talking homeowners, but we're talking corporations. Because throughout our experience has been in the Crystal Lake area is, if you're a corporation, if you're a business, you get really great attention from the commission. If you're homeowners, other than Commissioner Parnas, we're thought of last. We'd like to not have that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who cares to comment on this item? Come on up, I just need your name and address for the record, please. We'll go one at a time.
I'm Rabbi Larry Cheval, live at 16806 Royal Pointe Santa Tribe in Weston, Florida. I'm a chaplain with the Hallendale Beach Police Department, interfaith chaplain, I've been interfaith chaplain with Vitas Healthcare as well, and I'm also with BSO. I'm here to tell you that there's a definite need for King David Memorial Gardens at Fairway to serve all faiths. There's been limited grave space here in Broward County, and it's desperately needed for first responders and for the community at large. And I endorse the plan for Fairway Memorial Gardens. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Sean Levy, 4821 Northwest 18th Ave., Deerfield Beach. Had a house on the lake there, Crystal Lake, for four and a half years now. Been watching, you know, seeing what's going on with the cemetery. I have friends in the community, of course, you know, being close to the boards. The perimeter, they have a chance... The perimeter, they have a chain link fence, it's not well maintained. You know, you'd think, when they came in, you would have a perimeter done, because all these homes and condos, or townhouses, whatever they may be, would have something nice to look at. But right now, they have a chain link fence. The other day, they sprayed, didn't let any of the homeowners know who have pets, cats, foliage, they just sprayed along the fence. Brown marks everywhere, like, so that there's no communication, they haven't done their border. As far as their trees and their financial or whatever they're doing with the in, I'm more worried about the outer. You know, where the homes are, like, they took away a golf course. I've been there four and a half years, like I said, they just took away the other Crystal Lake. But, um, so you used to have a house on a golf course, or a home, or townhouse, or whatever. Now, for I don't know how many years now, they've been trying to do the cemetery, and now you got chain link fence, bad landscaping, they got rodents, they got, I'm going to end it at that, I'm just saying that they need, the perimeter of their property needs to be addressed before they go to Zone Two or whatever phase they want to go to. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Yes, my name is James Kaskie, K-A-S-K-E, and I'm at 4711 Northwest 13th. Again, I didn't know, like he's, like was mentioned, I had no idea what this meeting was about. My concern, I wish I could make it out on here, I immediately adjacent to my house is the asphalt path, that used to be the cart path to go from the front line to the back line. And it is, I don't know what, I thought that it was all going to be fenced off, but now it looks like they're going to be putting a gate up, because I can see some pretty big pilings. This asphalt, I don't know what the intention is for it, or if it needs to be there, I don't know why the fence is going in. I took a picture, and if you want, I can show you. This asphalt is literally six and a half feet from the side of my house, and it's seven feet from my master bedroom window. I don't know if this is going to be an emergency exit type of a thing, or if they're removing traffic through there. Because it was intended for golf carts, I just bought property real over a year ago. And I was under the assumption that would be just fenced off and hopefully dismantled or whatever. So if it is just going to be an emergency path, I don't know what the plan is, but if you could pull it out, because currently, there used to be a path that went around until about a month ago. And people would walk their dogs along that behind the other house, if they wanted to change, they'd put up a new fence in that. So now, basically dead ends at the back of my house, and I still have people walking their dogs. So on my bedroom window closer to me to you, somebody's standing there watching their dog while I'm in my house, and it's, you know, it breaks into the privacy. But I have no, I have no idea basically what the intentions are of that path, the old cart path. So that's why I wanted to find out if anybody knows what's going on.
We can find out for you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Good evening. My name's Valerie Dowling, 1620 Northwest 48th Place, Deerfield Beach. I have been working with Mr. Little for the past four and a half years on this issue with the trees. I have pictures I would like to show you of what we have to live with. Can I approach?
Put him to the city clerk.
You can give him to the city clerk, please.
The neighbor that was living next to me, they had recently moved about three years ago.
If you could pull the mic a little bit closer to you, ma'am.
And the tree was overhanging their roof. So I had a discussion with Mr. Little about the tree. If it falls on your roof, who's going to pay for it? Because it's your tree. He basically told me, "Well, that's why we both have insurance. Now, you're supposed to keep those trees trimmed." I have called Mr. Parnas, he has gotten the city out to trim those trees, but I don't believe it's the city's responsibility to do that, it's Fairway's responsibility to do that. And it's gotten so out of control, they don't want to do anything about it. And again, when I spoke to somebody else that works at Fairway, again, I was told, "The leaves are on your side, you have to trim them." It's very out of control. And we really expect Fairway to take care of the problem. We would like those trees pulled out, because they're up against the fence, they're bending the fence. And as that diagram showed, it said, the attorney said that there was trees planted. Yes, there's trees. We were also told that there was going to be trees and bushes. When I spoke to Mr. Little about the fence, he would never answer me. According to that diagram, it looks like a PVC fence. The other thing we would request is that Fairway take care of those coyotes. They're killing cats, dogs, they're coming, actually, my neighbor saw a coyote come up to my patio. That's very dangerous, and this has been going on. So we're just requesting that these trees be pulled out, Mr. Little takes care of the property, we get those bushes there, and the fence put up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Not seeing any coming forward, I'm going to close it to the public. Mr. Mealy?
Thank you. So first of all, the elevations on the property and the berm question, we are doing exactly what it calls for in the approved site plan. I was just looking at the paving drainage sheet that's part of the big package. I don't know if you all have the same big package plans I have, or whether you have it electronically, but it's in there, it shows the cross-sections for the edge of the property, and we're doing exactly what the approved site plan calls for. As for the cart path, the, all we were proposing to do is to replace the gate with a gate. If you want us to close it off completely, we don't care, but I would ask you to first ask your police fire and EMS if for some reason they need it. But if you want us to close it off with a fence and not a gate, then we'll do it, we don't care. And then, in terms of the last speaker, we were, as Mr. Seropa said earlier, we were seeking two years to start this work in the yellow area. We've now said we would do it in one. The reason that we were waiting to remove certain things is you want to remove and then plant. You don't want to remove and have it wide open with nothing there. So now that we're accelerating the planting, we're accelerating, we will accelerate the removal as well. And obviously, we're going to have to do the removal before we do the planting. So I don't see any reason why we can't speed up that aspect of the process and do exactly what the last speaker asked us to do. As for the fence, when we remove the material that's growing into the fence, we'll be able to take care of the fence at the same time. And so we have no objection to accelerating that as well, because before we plant, we want to get that fence in order, and we want to get the bad material out of there. As for, first of all, this is not a variance. Secondly, I didn't say anything about money or hardship, because that's not the standard for what we're talking about today, but what has been happening. And if you talk to people in the landscape business, they'll tell you, it's not just us. We're going as far as Georgia to get some of these trees, because you can't get them. Because after Hurricane Irma, a lot of the tree stock in the state was wiped out. So we're not the only ones having problems getting the right sized material. The other thing I think that's important is this is a 50-year build-out, five old years to build this out. So it's not like a typical residential subdivision or a shopping center. If you do something tonight that allows us to phase, it doesn't mean you have to do it with anyone else, because I don't know how many people are going to have a 50-year build-out project like we are. And then also, please keep in mind that the way this has been designed, anything of height is in the middle of the property, not on the edges. First, there's buffers, then there's flush mounted gravestones, then there's vertical ones, and only when you get inside are there the mausoleums and the buildings. So I want to mention one thing about the crematorium. So the crematorium was going to be in a building where the rest of the building was going to be office and, you know, funeral home type use or whatever. So when we take out the crematorium, we'll just use that space for offices like we would for the rest of the building. I thought I should make that clear, because one of the buildings is labeled with both uses. If you approve it that way, we will remove the label for the crematorium. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, we have to answer.
City Attorney?
Mr. Mealy, I'm going to do this again, and I don't think this was your intent, I just want to make sure that the record's clear. You said, again, that in one year, you were going to start the installation. I just want to clarify, within a year, the installation of the agreed-upon plant material is going to be installed.
That's correct.
Okay. And then it's going to grow with, right?
Within two years.
Thereafter.
After that.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
And what I'm saying is that prior to that one year where we're going to plant, we'll clean everything up, we'll change the gate or fence on the cart path, depending on what you tell us you want us to do. We'll do it either way. But we were not proposing that to be an access for us at all, because we don't need it. And then the cleaning up of the brush and the fence prior to starting the planting within that one year timeframe.
Will you be removing that paved area that's there?
Oh, if, the site plan did not reference removing the cart path, but if you want us to take it out, we'll take it out. There's certain places where it's not very close to the property line, but if it's close to the property line in certain places, and you want it out, tell us and we'll take it out.
I'm not sure who was first, I'm going to go with the commissioner from that district, Commissioner Parnas.
It hurts me to get as many complaints as I have about the cemetery. I would like them to become good corporate neighbors. I can understand the settlement for one year for trees and plants, instead of two years or four years, one year. Two years to grow. $112,500 bond, and no crematorium. Most of all, I don't want these homeowners hurt. You want this approved? Your trees go on their property, your responsibility. They're your trees. I don't want to get complaints, tree is on my roof and it's from the cemetery. Now with that, I will vote to approve this one year to get it done. But I don't want more complaints. I want you to become really a good neighbor. There's a lot of people that live there and have lived there a long time. It's sad that the golf courses didn't make it, and the compromise that was made was made in good faith. And it's not going to go away, but it will be improved. I've been over the property with code, we drove all through the property, and I see some of the problems. So as long as they're addressed, and it's done in a year, I'll approve it.
Commissioner Hudek?
I was out there yesterday, just kind of looking at it so that I could get a visual of what is actually happening out there. And I guess the question I do have is with regards to the border fence. Is, I believe that I saw a rendering of a border fence going around the property. If that is accurate, what type of fence is that going to be?
Chain link.
It's a chain link fence. Okay. Thank you.
No, I neglected to mention one thing, Mr. Mayor, if I might, about that coyote issue. By the way, we've heard that. We have a benign animal trapping agency going out to get the coyote and take him to the Everglades or wherever he belongs. But we recognize, you know, we have to get him out of there. And we're doing that. And then finally, I just wanted to say that if our branches grow over the fence, we'll be happy to go cut them, but it may be necessary for the homeowner to let our crew come over there in order to do it. But as long as they let him come over there to do it, we'll do it. And some of it, we can do from our side, but some of it might require going on the other side. But we're happy to do it.
Thank you. Commissioner, any other comments? Vice President Drowsky?
Thank you. Before I begin, I do want to disclose that I did meet with the applicant and Mr. Mealy to discuss this project before tonight. And I also received, I believe I received campaign contributions from them, from them both. We discussed this project and these solutions in detail, so I support the three that we've talked about so far. Mr. Mealy, you and I had discussed also between the two lakes, the existing lakes, there's a tree line that goes between those lakes now, which acts as a buffer, if you will, to the northern residents from seeing all the way into the property. If it's the, and I don't know if those residents want that tree line there still or not, but I mean, would you be committed, we talked about keeping that tree line there until you do Phase Two, to keep that buffer there?
Yes. If, Mr. Power, can we go back to the aerial photo, just in case somebody's wondering, I can point out where we're talking about. There we go. So if you look at the, obviously the parcel to the left, which is the cemetery, and you see a line of trees that almost looks like an M up near the top. That's what we're talking about. To not remove those until we do the balance of the landscaping along the northern property line, then we'll take them out.
Okay. And good luck, because I believe there's way more than one coyote in West Deerfield. So I get calls about it all the time, so he's got, he has friends.
Well, if our trapper is successful, we'll give his name to the other people who might need him.
There you go. Thank you.
There's only one Road Runner, but there's several coyotes that live. Commissioner Parnas?
I make a motion to approve.
Before we do, if I could just, if I could comment on this before we move forward with it, I, one of the luxuries of having longevity up here is that you remember what happened and all the private conversations you had in getting this approved in the first place. It was not a, this took over what was a golf course. That golf course had been long gone by the time this plan came into place. It was going to be, I believe, an assisted living facility, was going to be in the center of one of the parcels, and the residents came forward and suggested a cemetery and brought this in. And I do know that the residents probably didn't have it on their radar, and when it was approved, they had concerns after it was approved about the crematorium. So eliminating that is a big change. But I will say this, I know what was promised, and this isn't just about the current situation with the inability to get these types, these trees of this caliper. This was almost immediate. We had conversations dating way back on this, that there were some concerns that maybe they had overpromised on the size of what was going in there. And because of that, and I have had a discussion with Mr. Mealy on this recently, is that I'm not inclined to allow for a smaller caliper, though I will say that the removal of the crematorium is, goes a long way in putting forward some goodwill. It is disappointing to hear the many complaints that we've had, because Commissioner Parnas isn't the only one that we've heard about the maintenance of what is there. And that's very disappointing, and probably would have made this a lot easier for me to be in favor of it at this point. I am not, though. So we have a motion from Commissioner Parnas. Yes, Commissioner Parnas?
I want to say this, I also have received. I have also received a donation two years ago from Mr. Mealy's firm, and I have had a meeting with him and the owner of the cemetery prior to this meeting. I shall make my motion to approve as amended.
And for clarification, that includes the three conditions?
Yes.
That you mentioned, Mr. Parnas, and for the record, those conditions are, condition one, correct me if I'm wrong at any time, Commissioner Parnas, that they will, within one year, plant all of the required trees and plant materials in the perimeter buffer based on the new heights that were proposed. Within two years thereafter, they have to make sure that those trees grow to the code required height, and they will provide us with a bond now, or shortly thereafter, the approval of this item, that would cover replacement of those trees in the amount of $112,500. And then the third item was their agreement to prohibit or refrain from the use of crematory activities on the property. Are those the three conditions?
Those are the conditions.
Commissioner, would you also, you may want to consider adding in there that if the homeowner is requesting to have the cart paths removed, that that would be part of the?
Yes.
Okay.
If the request is made to remove the cart paths, then they shall be removed.
Okay.
And to maintain the tree line?
Yeah, well, that was part of it, to maintain the tree line, so it doesn't go into other people's property.
Now, if you look at the aerial photo on the left, you'll see, and I don't know if there's some, Mr. Power, is there a way to point at anything on here? There you go. See that, Eric, if you would, just trace that out, that's the area we're talking about. To not remove that. That's the area we're talking about, to not remove that until the new stuff is planted along the northern property line. I don't know a better way to describe it other than to have it pointed out that way.
So the new trees will be up where the lines are around, and then they'll remove the inner trees.
We have a motion by Commissioner Parnas. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Vice Mayor Drosky. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
No.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number five. It's an application from DNS... Oh, excuse me, number six, an application from DNS Funding LLC. It's a major site plan application seeking approval for a two-story, four-unit, multifamily residential building and seeking approval of two variances, case number 2501 on the variances, from Section 98-61 of the City of Deerfield Beach Land Development Code to allow a 10-foot east side yard setback in lieu of the 12 and 1/2 feet required by code, and a minimum lot width of 75 feet in lieu of the 100 feet as required by code. This is a public hearing, quasi-judicial hearing. I just want to point out, because it's a variance, it does require a four-fifths vote.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Yes.
Good evening. John Lamb, 5485 Wiles Road, Coconut Creek, Florida. And I am the architect representing DNS Funding for this project.
Mr. Lamb, you do have the right to a more formal quasi-judicial proceeding. If you so choose, you also have the right to waive such a proceeding. I can explain in more detail if you have any questions. Do you waive?
I choose to waive.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Currently, there's a single-family house on this property. It is Zone RM25, so it does allow for a multifamily development. My project...my client is planning on removing the single-family house and building a simple structure of two-story, four, two-bedroom units on this property. We've...what we've tried to do is be cognizant of the residences and the neighboring developments on the island, and what we've presented, we think, is very residential in feeling. It's not a big box. It's not a commercial-looking building. It's not an office building. So, you know, we're trying to blend in with the community. We've complied with everything that staff's put forward to us. To speak on the variances, the first variance has to do with the lot width. That has nothing...that's beyond our control. These lots were platted under 100 feet, and there's many of them on the island that has to...that doesn't comply with the written code of 100 feet. This is 75 feet wide, so, you know, that's what we have to work with. The second variance has to do with the side setback to the east, and for us to comply with that 10-foot setback per code, we would have had to present a flat-roof structure, and we thought it was more important to make it aesthetically pleasing. So we are requesting this two-and-1/2-foot variance to give it a trust roof and a more pleasant feeling in the neighborhood. If anybody has any questions on this project, go ahead and ask, but we believe what we presented, you know, should make everybody happy, and we definitely complied with staff's recommendations.
Thank you. Thank you. Commission comments? I'm going to open it to the public then. Thank you, sir.
Oh, it's fine.
Did we have to waive quasi-judicial?
He did.
Okay. Excellent. We have Bette Willett up first.
Yes, I would like to comment on this plan. It should be voted down. One reason, because many of the neighbors feel it's not compatible with the area, which it certainly is not, but mostly because it's not to code. I'm always in favor of development on our beach and in our city, which adheres to code or needs a variance due to the shape of the lot or other physical hardship. But this seems to me to be a bad faith plan from the very beginning. At the time of the purchase, the buyer knew that the property was only 75 feet wide. He knew that the code for that sized property was single-family home. They bought it, taking the chance that they could wheedle the commission into giving them a variance for a four-unit building, a building that they would have to squeeze onto this quarter-acre, undersized lot. To visualize what this means, picture a single-family home on a quarter-acre lot. And now picture four residences on that same lot. Our city allows variances for hardships, and only for hardships, where an owner cannot otherwise use the property for anything at all without a variance. Our city codes have been carefully crafted to maintain the quality of life in our city. This property was bought with the buyer fully knowing that the lot was only legal for a one-family home. There is no hardship to using the property for a single-family home. The buyer needs no variance to utilize the property. Courts have stated that maximizing the property on a building is not legally a hardship. Their justification for this variance is simply greed. More money, bigger profit. Not a legal justification at all. Squeezing oversized buildings onto small properties simply for more profit is not the direction our city, especially on our lovely gem of a barrier island, should be going. The usual developer justification, it's better than what's there, doesn't take into account the fact that it may seem better than an old rundown building, but it is certainly not good or what should be there. Our codes are not in existence to be disregarded by anyone who thinks they can pull a fast one to grab easy money. Thank you.
Thank you. Elise Miller Platon?
I made a...four copies, sorry, I should have made five, but I made a copy of the house that's there now for all of you to see. Right now, right now, you have a single-family home with a tree in front that must be over 100 years old. One house. Every house on that block is a single-family house, set back off the street. So he didn't show you the pictures of the plan of the houses that he plans to build. So just picture that, like, five houses, single-family houses on that block. He plans to build four apartments in that small area with two car garages, two two-car garages, so that the people that live there have parking for the four apartments. There's no other parking available for those apartments on that street, because you only have the garages for the people that live there. There's no additional parking for anyone that might visit them. Also, you have to consider, they're two-bedroom apartments, four-two-bedroom apartments. People that will rent there, will they be allowed to sublet one of the two bedrooms, so that you will have more than four families living there? Because very often on the island, if there's an extra bedroom, people that live there rent it out to someone else. So you're going to have more than four families living there. I don't know where the visitors are going to park, because there's no parking on the street, because they're private houses. The only parking available for them would be the parking garage around the corner from Kilwinds or down the block, is the paid parking. That's not...if I was visiting them, I wouldn't want to park in a parking garage where I have to pay. So there's no space for anyone else. Another thing is property values. Just imagine, if you lived on a house on a street with four private houses, and then the second house on the block is a force...is a two-story building with two-car garages with four families living there. Your house on that block will not be worth very much, because if I had a choice of moving somewhere to a private house, would I want to live on a block that had this house that comes up to the curb? There's no house going back. The house comes right up to the curb. I wouldn't want to live on that block or buy that property at all. Also, how...I'm wondering if they buy this property and they build the four-family house, the four-family house there, how much time do they have before they could sell it to someone else and make it into a B&amp;B? And another reason why I'm against it is that Deerfield Beach is very special. We have a lot of private houses, but I don't want Deerfield Beach...one more minute to be...
Would you like another minute, ma'am? Yes, you're allowed another minute.
Okay. I wouldn't want it to become an island filled with B&amp;Bs. I would like it to be a place where people take pride where they live, because rental people don't care. They don't take care of their property. They don't take pride in what happens on the island. So I would like to not have more B&amp;Bs and multi-apartments on the island. And the only way you can stop it now from happening is by not granting the variance. Once you give the variance to one person that wants to buy a single-family property, other people will do it too and misuse it. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Milatello?
Pam Milatello, 716 Emerald Way West. I'm very much against the variance on this, and the main reason is, well, two reasons. The people who brought the property knew what they were doing when they bought it. This isn't something that they, you know, bought years ago and the rules were changed. They knew exactly what they were doing. And if the variances that are requested are given, you've just set up the whole barrier island for units like this, because if you tell him that it's okay and you give him these variances, you don't really have, I don't think, have a legal leg to stand on to the next developer that comes in and says, "I want to do the same thing on the property next to this piece of property." So you're creating a real problem for the island. And we've worked very hard, as you know, over the years, to make the island a good place with good quality of life. And there's going to be differences in the types of developments, but there's not a legal reason to give these variances for this project at all. And I hope that you'll consider the long-term effect on approving his request, because you're going to have a domino effect, and you can't possibly tell the next developer that comes up, "Who wants to buy the property right next to this property?" Sorry, you can't do that. So you're setting our community up for big-time problems, I think, if you proceed. I hope to say no.
Thank you. Tom Conick? Mr. Conick, can you just give it to the clerk, and she'll pass it down? Thank you.
Tom Conick, the office address is 411 East Hillsborough Boulevard, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I want to talk about the factual and legal aspects of this and concerning variances. I put together an attachment to go through this. Today happens to be the third month of when DNS Funding bought this property. I've attached Exhibit 1 from the Broward County Property Appraiser, together with the recorded deed, that the recorded deed was signed on March 18th of 2019. When you look at Exhibit 2, you will see that two days after DNS Funding bought this property, you will see that on March 20th of 2019, there's a letter indicating the development. The applicant knew what the applicant was getting. Now, the applicant says that this property is entitled to a multifamily. That's not accurate, and I'm going to explain why. The properties that are less than 100 feet, most of these, like this property, were platted 75 feet. The applicant has acknowledged that there are many properties that are 75 feet. When you look at Exhibit 3 from your ordinance 98-49, in B1, a permitted use is the dwelling single-family. So if you had less than 100 feet, you could develop this as single-family. You could not develop it as multifamily. So talk about turning things on its head. He says, "Well, I want a variance to 100 feet to do multifamily." But under the code, he's not allowed...the applicant's not allowed to do that. The applicant is only allowed single-family. When we look at Exhibit 4, shows that the property complies with the 70-foot minimum lot width under the code. It's 75 feet. So it complies with the code. Right now, a single-family needs no variances. This is a substantial variance that's being asked for. Exhibit 5. And you really need to read each one of these, because the applicant is required...this commission is required to find each one of the elements of the variance have been met. When you go through it, I go through from Exhibit 6 through 10 and say how they don't meet these criteria.
Would you like an additional minute?
Yes. There...the big problem is, is that when you read through this, what the applicant, in fact, says on the variance request, the applicant says, "Well, many properties are less than 100 feet, and they may all..."they'll come in and ask for the RM25. How can this commission deny anyone on all of these single-family residences? How can they deny anyone who comes in and say, "We want a variance for 100 square...100 feet for the lot width," when you grant it to the applicant? You can't grant a special concession to an applicant under the code. This is not a hardship. I didn't cite law, because there wasn't a reason, but financial hardship or making more money is not a hardship. And when someone buys this three months ago and two days later...
Thank you, Mr. Conick.
Requested. Thank you.
Next, we have Martha McGary.
Hi, Martha McGary, 1442 Southeast 6th Street, Deerfield Beach. I am opposed to this project on...from the aspect of quality of life for our barrier island, and with respect to the non-compliance with the variances that are required...variances are required by our code specifically. They are specific requirements. They aren't something that you just pull out of the hat or pull out of the air. So with regard to this, most of what I feel has already been stated, so I'm going to be very quick and sit down. But this project is not good for our city. It's not good for the residents that are there on the barrier island, or the rest of us in this city and our visitors that visit the island. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Jim McGary.
Jim McGary, 1442 Southeast 6th Street, Deerfield Beach, 33441. One problem one has when they speak extemporaneous, we tend to use...I tend to use long terms. I apologize in my reference that on that number five, I kept on referring to it as variance, and I see it as a plot plan. So I apologize to the commission to tolerate my dissertation on that. My problem with this number six now is...has been shared by other members of the public already, and I have a direct question to the attorney. If, in fact, a resident buys those properties, can they qualify for the B&amp;B, this new concept of renting properties, to...on a daily or weekly basis? concept of renting properties, to, on a daily or weekly basis, and not fall under any other regulations?
We'll get an answer for you.
Okay. My assumption is, I understand assumption, is that they, in fact, if a resident buys that, that they can use this Airbnb or whatever that concept is today. I live in the cove and I'm seeing firsthand the problems associated with that. And if you take this concept, or this variance, and those units go in, they may be in a position to rent these things daily, weekly, to a number of different potential customers. The parking issue becomes exacerbated tremendously if that, in fact, occurs. And as many have cited, that that whole area has this 75-foot limitation. And you are opening up a major area of the barrier island that's going to be affected by this, to say nothing of the traffic going in and out on our main roads. And as a final note, in our application, I read, by the way, the website is marvelous, Mayor, giving all that information that is available. One of the comments made by the petition was, "If, in fact, this variance is not approved", quote, "The buyer will have to sell." Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the people that have signed up. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to comment on this item?
Rita Massey, 349 Northeast 19th Avenue. Well, everybody else has spoken, but I am directly affected by this project, and I am thoroughly opposed to it. We live, I live, in a neighborhood. We refer to it as the hood. We all know each other, we all like each other, and there's a camaraderie on the island. And this purchaser was fully aware of the consequences when he made this purchase, and I definitely do not want this to be passed, because if this gets passed, then we're going to have them up and down every street, and we're going to change the whole concept of what Deerfield Beach is. And besides which, it's ugly. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, if we could hold our applause. Anyone else in the public here to comment?
Jane Shafrin, 48, Northeast 19th Terrace. I wasn't really planning to comment, but I am a neighbor. I'm located right up the street. We are a community of, on the barrier island, of many single-family historic homes. I live in one. I own three properties on the barrier island. I would never have an Airbnb in any of my properties. They do ruin the quality of life, as far as I'm concerned. I realize that our local hands are tied by state statutes regarding Airbnb regulation. However, what concerns me, besides the fact I see no demonstrated hardship for this fourplex to be built, what bothers me, and I don't know if you're all aware of this, but the developer has put out, and I've seen it on the internet already, the developer is building this in order to sell it, and the Realtor that the developer is using has proposed a listing, listing this future fourplex as an Airbnb, stating that in each of the four apartments, up to 10 people per apartment can be housed in that apartment. Now, that flies in the face of our local Deerfield Beach ordinance for Airbnbs, which state that per bedroom, two persons per bedroom plus two additional people. That's only six, that's only, whatever. It's less than, it's less than 10 people. And since Airbnbs are so difficult to regulate, 10 people turns into 20 people. And Airbnbs do affect our quality of life. Certainly, you can regulate our health, under your police power, our health, safety, and welfare of our community. And Airbnbs, we have a problem with trash, with traffic, and with noise. And we are a community. The barrier island isn't just a beach, beachy for tourists. They're here five months of the year. As Rita said, we're all neighbors. You know, we have, we love our neighborhood. And although the picture of this fourplex looks pretty, it's not going to be pretty for our area. We don't need it. And if there's no demonstrated hardships, as others have brought out, I don't think the variances should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Avos Richard, 1919, Northeast First.
What was your name?
Avos Richard. So what I'm handing out is the proposal that Lance Sherman has created to Airbnb this property, that she was referring to. He is the S in DNS. He's the developer. So this is his plan, he put it out on the internet to sell it. What I haven't heard here is an argument on why this should pass. These rules are set up for the people of Deerfield, and for the commission to grant a variance, it needs to show how this variance is going to help the citizens of Deerfield, at least one. The developer is from out of town, looking for an exception to the rules that were set up for a reason. We created these rules to limit units and buildings being built on lots this small, to keep parcels of land like this from having this happen to them. He's not looking for a small one either, he's looking for 30% difference. This is a big change from what our rules are. And the variance would set a precedent that would allow multi-units to be built in all these lots. It would get rid of the neighborhood feel and turn it into a dense urban area. The fact is, it'd be more traffic, more crime, less of a neighborhood, be a place where people from out of town would come to party, get messed up, you know? But the developer doesn't care. He doesn't have the best interests in town. You know, he just wants to create an Airbnb and make money. If you wanted to Airbnb it out as it currently is, you could get, like, a high-end clientele as a pool, as a nice setup. But that's not the clientele he's looking for. He's looking for shorter, cheaper, shorter stays. People coming in just to party for a couple days, drink, do some drugs near the beach, maybe sell them. You know, it's not in our favor. So how is this going to help the residents? How is this going to be in any of our favor, really? So the proposal says that, yeah, 40 people can stay there. Are people going to get an accident, says they exit onto this really busy road? Are they going to, there's no resident parking for guests, are they going to park on the street whenever someone comes over? Are they going to take care of the trash? Or are they going to separate out the recycling? Are they going to bring it out? When maintenance people come, are they, where are they going to park? Maintenance and cleaning people, because an Airbnb needs maintenance and cleaning people. The only place to park is either on the street or blocking that driveway. And I'm guessing these people aren't going to bring out their own trash, so somebody has to come over and do that. So they're probably going to just temporarily block right on the street, I'd assume. So that's pretty much their only option. You know, and if Airbnb gets cut down, or if it gets run down, I mean, what are they going to turn it into? A rehab house or something, you know? Something that's not going to help us either. This doesn't have any long-term benefit. It's not like this is going to become a nice, single-family home eventually. It's going to set a precedent where it just brings down the neighborhood into more of these things that, you know? Just doesn't attract what we need in the town. I had more, but I think that's it.
If you'd like another minute, you can have it.
I'll take another minute. They're also planning on knocking down the tree that's there, and also knocking out a tree that's in back, but I guess they're going to buy out a credit in someplace else that's not on the island for taking out the foliage that is. So it'll become a less green place. You know, it's not helping the environment, it's also not helping our environment, you know, where we live. We're trying to live in a nice place, so. They want an exception to the rule, so they can just make money. I mean, but it's not in anyone's favor. They haven't stated how it would be in anyone's favor. They haven't stated any reason why they should get this variance. I mean, they haven't stated any reason why it would help anyone in Deerfield. Yes, they make some money, but why would that qualify you to get a variance? Why would you get an exception, especially 30% to a rule, with just the reason that you want to make money? It doesn't make any sense to me. So I'm against it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Lindsay Cutrell, 1985, Northeast 2nd Street. I just had a quick question. I don't know if you're lucky to answer me if I'm here, but these are two-car garages?
Yes.
And what is the standard size for a garage? Because when we redid our parking lot, each parking space has to be 10 feet.
We'll get that information for you. It's available on the backup.
Based on what I've done, my research, it's 22 feet of this two-car garage. So already, in that space, wouldn't that be too much? So that's my only question.
Okay. Thank you. Just show of hands, are you for or against the project?
Against.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going to close it to the public. The applicant has any comments? If we could get a couple of questions answered. First, Mr. McGary's question regarding, can it be used as an Airbnb? I don't know if the city attorney wants to comment on that.
I will comment on that. And I know the gentleman, Mr. McGary, referenced a specific company, and I don't know the conditions for that company in order to take a listing, so I'm not going to speak to that. I think the underlying inquiry was, if this is approved, are they going to be able to rent, do short-term rentals at the property? And my answer is that state law prohibits the city from regulating the frequency of those, and duration of those rentals. It also prohibits the city from prohibiting vacation rentals. So the answer to your question is, the city can't regulate that, so the city can't prevent that. Now, I would also advise the commission, though, since you've been providing a lot of material about Airbnb and other things, that ultimately you should make your decision based on the application that's before you, the city code requirements, and whether or not they've met the standards that you have for a variance. And that's what your decision should be based on, because you're unable to regulate this area. And I'm just the messenger, state legislature is the one that decided that they should be the ones to decide all that, and not you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, there was one other question about the size of the garage. Eric? Mr. Powers?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I did bring the floor plan up. There are two-car garages. You can see the detail.
And what is the size on those?
It's 22 feet.
22 feet. Thank you. Yes, sir, sorry.
Okay. As far as Airbnb goes, this was brought up during the P and Z meeting. I was hired by my client to present, you know, design this building. I have no idea what his plans are. I do know that he doesn't plan on living there, and he did purchase this as an investment. It was my understanding it was going to be long-term rental. You know, and I know that his main focus is to, you know, present it as long-term rental. I know that one ad that was just handed to you guys, that was a shocker to me, you know, last time also, anyway. But a couple of other questions that came up. The building is 40 feet back from the edge of the street. It's not on top of, you know, the street like it was presented. There's neighboring properties that are much closer than what this will be, you know, so we've taken that into account. We're not providing any extra parking on the front property on purpose, because we'd rather keep as much landscape area as possible. Yes, there is a parking garage, and visitors may have to use the parking garage if there are some visitors. As far as, let's see. Okay. In my opinion, Airbnb, this isn't set up to be conducive to sticking 10 people in. Both bedrooms are upstairs. You know, downstairs is just a common area, there's no extra bedrooms. You know, I don't see it being an Airbnb, but, you know, I can't control that either. As far as, let's talk about the variances. The property is 75-foot as it stands. We are not asking for the zoning code to be changed to RM25. It presently is RM25. And we are allowed to build multifamily projects on this property, whether it's 75 feet or 100 feet. The code was written many years ago, RM25, to be 100 feet wide for multifamily. This lot is not 100 feet wide, we accept that. But we're not asking for a variance to change anything to do with the width. You know, we can design whatever we design within the parameters of this lot, but it is allowed to be multifamily, not just single-family. Single-family, under the code, has different regulations and does not have to go in front of the board, obviously. You know, but, you know, we're trying to take that into account also. If anybody else has any questions, you know, I'm here to answer anything, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Hudek, and then Commissioner Preston, and then Vice President Drowsky.
My question would be for Mr. Power. Is a single-family, is a multifamily unit allowed on a 75-foot-wide property?
It's an RM25 zoning district, and multifamily is permitted. That's a use issue, not a dimension issue. So multifamily is permitted on this zoning district, on this property.
Thank you.
Commissioner Preston?
Several of the speakers said that the intent of this project is solely to make money. Well, you know, the fact is that, you know, we all work and we all want to make money. There's nothing wrong with making money, but not at the expense of the people that live there. Nothing wrong with making money. Was there, you had to know that when you came in this community, this project, as it presents itself, was going to drastically change the aesthetics in the area. Did you one time put out flyers to say, "Let's have a neighborhood meeting. Let's talk about this. Let me understand your concerns." I don't think so. And because of that type of communication, you isolate a community, you know that this is going to drastically change and impact how people live on a day-to-day basis, and they were just supposed to accept that? I don't think it's good. The communication not only was poor, but it was also with no caring. You know, I don't care, I just, this is the project, and we're going to stick it in no matter what. So I don't think it was done right.
Vice President Drowsky?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one question for the applicant, and that, you addressed the lot width variance request, which I accept. You can't put, the code says 100 feet, the lot is platted for 75 feet. I do think that's a hardship, but you didn't address the eastern property line variance request, and that's to go from 12 and 1/2 feet to 10 feet. And I'd like to know what the legal hardship is for that request, because the backup material on the application, page 6 of 8, says, "Without the variance request for a 10-foot, 0-inch side yard setback along the east property line, the project would not be economically feasible for the applicant, and the applicant would have to entertain selling the property." So I hear an economic hardship for the variance, but that's not the legal standard. The legal standard is, you know, what with the property is the hardship for the eastern property line, and that's what I'd like to hear.
Okay. I can't, again, I can't speak for economics with the owner, I can tell you about design. So when I'm designing this project, and I'm designing this based on the existing setback, which is 10 feet, we've also got a height consideration taken into effect. So I'm designing this two-story structure, and I get to that 12, you know, that 20-foot height consideration, and the code says, for every foot higher than I have to step back in. So that presented itself to where this project, being two-story, for me to stick with a 10-foot side setback, and that 20-foot height lends itself to having a flat roof structure. I thought it was more feasible, more pleasing, to present this project without a box look to it, have a truss roof on it. So we approached staff and said, "Is there something we can do about this?" And, you know, they supported our decision on asking for a variance by scooting it back to 10-foot. It was always 10-foot to begin with, but because we wanted to go a little bit higher with this truss roof, it pushed it to 12 and 1/2 feet. We asked to go back to the original 10-foot. You know, it was supported by staff, so, you know, we decided to move on with that.
I understand that. It sounds more of a design issue than a hardship issue.
It's a design issue, yes, but, you know, I took it upon myself to say, it's a lot more pleasant, this structure, the way it looks now, as opposed to having just a flat roof structure. You know, and meet that exact 10-foot and 20-foot height regulation.
I understand.
Thank you. Sir, I know you're just the architect, so a lot of these things that are coming to you, you're kind of put in an unfortunate position. I guess that might be intentional by the owner.
That's right.
So, welcome sacrificial lamb. So- So I'm not going to ask you questions that go outside of what you're trying to do here. And you're put in a weird situation to answer questions that you're really not set up for. And, you know, you have your client's request, and you have the city's request. The city's request is, these are our rules, follow them. And your client's request is, I want four units in this tiny parcel of land, make it work. So that's what you're trying to do. One of them has to give. In my opinion, it's not going to be the city. Okay? I'm not giving in on our rules on this. The hardship has not been proven, the second hardship. I understand the first hardship. It's not created by you, and I do understand that would probably be more open-minded to it. The second one, there is no hardship that has been created or that you've been able to prove. And your client has not been able to do that. So I certainly wouldn't support it. I will say this, when people say, you know, we are limited in what we can do when it comes to regulating Airbnbs, whatever the short-term rentals are. The state has taken that away from us. Going back to Commissioner, or Vice Mayor Drowsky's always argument about the home rule, that's been stripped from us. So bringing that into the equation doesn't help anyone's cause to argue this out. It also, to say, what does it bring to the city? Well, if I saw correctly, and one of the things that were provided, what was the purchase amount for this property? It was under $500,000. And the resale is looking at 2.4 million? Yeah, from a financial standpoint, that certainly would benefit the taxpayers. But not at the expense of what we're looking to do here. The rules, you haven't proven the hardship. Just because your client wants that, doesn't mean that we're going to give it to them. And I will say this, though. They might come back with a whole new design that makes them not need that one variance. The first one would probably come into play at that point, I would imagine. But just to keep that in mind, at this point, I see, I do not support granting of a variance on this property. Commissioner Hudak?
That was going to be my point. They could come back with a design, you know, that does not require a variance. But I wanted to personally thank you for that statement because I do not support it either.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to need to have a motion, I would imagine?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I make a motion to deny.
Second.
We have a motion to deny by Commissioner Hudak and seconded by Commissioner Preston. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drowsky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is item number seven. It's a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2018-2019 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan by reallocating CDBG funds to the Purchase Assistance Program, providing for an effective date, public hearing.
Is there anyone from the public here to comment on item number seven?
Yes.
Okay.
She's the only one. It's okay.
Pardon?
She's the only one.
Thank you.
Gwen Clark Reed, 1430 Southwest Sixth Way, Deerfield Beach. On this particular item, when I looked in the backup, I only saw a listing for public notice that was in the Sun Sentinel. Was there any consideration to giving, taking out maybe a public service ad or something in the local newspapers? Because I'm finding out, and this is my second time at a meeting coming up talking about CDBG, which I don't want you to think I'm beating a dead horse, because I'm not. This is a very important sum of money that the city gets, and it's for community use. And how it's dispersed and the programs that it's used for have to be given a lot of consideration. I'd like to know, does this mean that five people will get $80,000 for assistance? Just how is this money going to be divided up? Or will more people be allowed to get assistance? And can the funds be used to purchase properties on the beach or on the western extreme ends of the city? And why was the program, this particular program cited for the additional funding rather than funds to improve people's homes that are already existing?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? I'm going to close it to the public. If we could get some answers to those questions?
Yes, Mayor, if I may, I'll bring Ms. Blasbergard down to answer, address those questions. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners. Regarding the amendment, in the 1819 funding, we did set aside $150,000 for purchase assistance. Those funds have been all expended. And what we've been doing is, as projects are completed or canceled and are on the budget, all that money goes and stays in the U.S. Treasury. So staff, over the last couple of months, we've been looking at the funds, seeing what's there, and then trying to spend the funds. Because if we don't spend the funds by a certain timeframe, we'll lose the funds. So we've had an increased demand for purchase assistance. Each applicant can get up to $50,000. It depends on, depending on their income, they can receive up to 30% of the purchase price or up to 50%. The very low-income individuals can get up to 50% of the purchase price for down payment and closing cost assistance, not to exceed $50,000. And one of the other reasons that funds were, the $250,000 was set aside, as you know, we are working with the Southwater Community Land Trust to build six homes over in the north Deerfield Ave area. And the goal is to have the six homes be filled by our residents. The cost for these homes range from $192,000 to $198,000. And in order for our residents to be, to benefit from this, some of them will need some assistance. So it's one of the reasons that was included as well. Just for purchase assistance in general, it does not matter where in the city you purchase. As long as you meet the income criteria, you'll be eligible, as well as you do not exceed what the purchase price limit is for the state of Florida. The purchase price limit is, for Brad County, is pretty high. But their income will dictate how much they can afford through the mortgage process.
Thank you. I think so.
Okay.
I think they've all been answered. Commission? City clerk, I'm sorry, city clerk, can you say something?
She also asks about the advertising. With the advertisements, we are required by statute to advertise in a paper that has the general circulation for seven days a week. I'm not sure how much, how often the observer is distributed, but that's why we use the Sun Sentinel, because of that.
Thank you. Yes.
And we can also do, I'm a part of the press releases, so we'll do that in the future to make sure. We usually do it for the annual action plan. My apologies for the amendment. It wasn't done, but we'll make sure that in the future, the press release is done as well.
Great, thank you. I'm going to close it to the public. I think I already did, actually. Commission comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second by Commissioner Parnas. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drowsky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Okay, we come to the public comment section of the agenda. Persons addressing the commission shall state his or her name and address, and may speak for three minutes unless extended for one additional minute by the mayor. All remarks made by the public at a commission meeting on an agenda item should be done during the public comment period during the agenda item. Just a reminder, this is the public comment period for anything that you want to bring to the commission's attention that is not currently on the agenda, that doesn't have an agenda. No comment shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language which would offend persons of ordinary sensibilities shall be performed.
Okay. Anyone sign up?
There shall be.
No. Anyone from the public here to comment? Yes.
Elise Miller Plotkin, 1998, Northeast 7th Street. I just want to bring this up. I brought it up once before. Southeast 9th Street and Ocean Way. It's along the beach, the block before Embassy Street. So I just want to bring you up to date. There's a short entrance to the beach. You go from the gutter to the small sandy area, and then the entrance to the beach. The other areas along the beach have a grassy area, and then you enter the beach. This particular one has a sandy area, and then you go onto the beach. Apparently, three years ago, before I lived here, the groynes at that area, the groynes at that area were covered with sand. It was re-plemished, right at that area, at the entrance. Then the groynes are there. They were all covered up. Now we're at the stake is, there's no sand at all on the groynes anymore. So as soon as you, and then you have, there's no beach there. So you have the groin, and then water, and then the entrance to the beach. I had met with Patrick from the Department of Environment from here, and he met me there, so I could show him. And he saw that that area is very dangerous because the water's here, and then the entrance to the beach is here. There's nothing, no hill, nothing blocking the water. And when I spoke to him, he agreed this was an issue at that particular area. So he spoke to his supervisor, I don't know if it was Chad or someone else. And the response that he got was, well, when something happens, then we'll do something about it. Now, I'm a nurse for 38 years, and if you have a colonoscopy and the doctor tells you that you have three or four precancerous polyps, I would run from that doctor. I wouldn't wait until they turn to cancer, when it's too late, to treat it. The same way with this particular area on the beach. I'm not asking for re-plemishing. What I'm asking is to have a dune put and to close off that entrance completely. There are plenty other entrances for an emergency to get onto the beach. This particular one is very bad. You have to build a dune or put these big boulders and close that entrance completely if you want to protect the beach. I really think it's urgent, and it's not about re-plemishing with sand. It's about closing the entrance and building a dune or putting big boulders there to protect that island.
Thank you.
Jim McGary, 1442 Southeast 6th, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I want to compliment the city staff for completing the repairs on the bridge on 15th Avenue. As a resident right there, I appreciate it. It's very attractive and very functional. Looking forward to the ultimate reconstruction or whatever in mind on that. As this issues, which is brought up about these BnBs, it's going to be an increasing dilemma for the city to try to protect and safeguard our local communities. And with these things abusing what could potentially is happening, as I say, I'm in a community now where I'm seeing it firsthand. And as the mayor and colleagues have commented, this issue that you addressed tonight is going to be a more intense issue in the future. I'm not quite sure what litigation can be in process to address these things in the future. But I encourage the city to do the best they can to make our communities pleasant and viable for our permanent residents. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? You've, no, you haven't. Come on up.
Gwen Clark Reed, 1430 Southwest Sixth Way, Deerfield. I don't know how this situation can be handled. But yesterday, in the evening, I was driving in from the west, from 441, coming back into Deerfield. And I noticed that there were a lot of debris. We had had some rain, and we had a lot of palm fronds down in the roadway. As I got closer into Natura, into Tavoli, and I came through Natura, I noticed the same thing on the streets. And it was kind of dangerous because you couldn't really see these things until you got up on them. And I don't know who's responsible for cleaning up this, you know, debris in the roadway when we have those kinds of, you know, rainstorms and things like that.
We have staff that goes out to do that, when they're reported.
Who reports them?
That would be you. If you see them, you can report them.
You don't want me doing that?
You can call me anytime. Call me anytime. It's not a problem. No, in all honesty, and I'll let you sit. In all honesty, we do have staff that goes out. It is, you know, a matter of when we see it, we go out there, respond to it. Certainly, we've had a lot of storms, and I think even those of us who live in neighborhoods have a lot of the palms around there, deal with that. But if you call in and they're reported, staff does take care of that.
Gloria Battle, 1240 Southwest Sixth Way. And I own the property located at 168 Southwest 5th Court. On last Thursday, we took the time, my sisters and I, to clean out our homestead where we grew up. And we put it out on bulk day, only to find halfway through the day that there was a sign on it that said it was building material and that it would not be picked up. So we called the city, the person, well, the office that was responsible. And we were told that there was construction material, and it would not be picked up. And we assured them that it was not construction material. And the lady said to me, she said, well, we'll send somebody out, but that's going to cost you for us to send somebody out. We persevered, and we finally got a supervisor to come out. The supervisor verified to us that there was no construction material, made a phone call to have the load picked up. We need to look into that situation, gentlemen, because it's not fair to the homeowner to put out bulk material. My question then is, are these people trained that drive those trucks and are responsible for picking up bulk material? Are they trained in identifying what is construction material as opposed to just bulk material, without having to send a supervisor out, therefore using more of city dollars to pick up the trash than we normally need to do? So I would just like for you to look into that situation for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Sullivan, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach. I reviewed the city procurement code and was rather surprised to find no policy or procedure or mention on single-source and sole-source procurements. There was definition of it, but there was no procedure for it. Data says that a buyer will get a much better value when competing a job. Once the buyer chooses to go to a single or sole source, competition is no longer a viable means to attain the best price or value. So what does one do with a single or sole source? You request supporting information to validate the labor, material, supplier costs, overhead, and profit. You evaluate the bid to determine if hours or costs are fair and reasonable. But there was nowhere to be found the methods the city uses to accomplish this. Is it good practice to accept the contractor's bid, especially a sole or single source, without knowing if it is fair and reasonable? I'd say no. And I'd also pray that none of you on that dais would disagree. So how does the city verify the reasonableness of a sole-source or single-source bid? Based on the arbitorium award and the recommendation for one of tonight's project, I would say they do not. The commission needs to have city staff amend the procurement code to include the methodology necessary determining if sole or single-source procurements are fair and reasonable to the taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? I'm going to close it to the public. Agreements and expenditures?
Item number nine, or excuse me, item number eight, is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the award of RFP number 2018-1921 for towing services to Emerald Transportation Corporation, authorizing execution of a contract with Emerald for a five-year term with one additional five-year renewal option with annual revenue to the city of $100,000, providing an effective date.
Okay. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The city went through a competitive solicitation process for the towing services, RFP number 2018-1921. We have certain requirements within the RFP to ensure that we have a company that meets not only the licensing requirements, but the requirements that we would want for our residents and our visitors. For instance, in terms of proximity to the city, that they must have, for instance, a tow yard within five miles of the city boundaries. That obviously does limit, to some degree, the amount the amount of competition that can be included in the RFP. But at the end of the day, the pool of towing companies that do business with municipalities is very small at the same time. There are other known competitors that can compete on this particular contract. However, they opted not to, even when calling to ask them if they would like to participate, the answer we received was no. That said, it's obviously a very small market and you will see that across the county, most of these towing companies that do do business with municipalities are very territorial in that regard. However, obviously, even with us having very little competition on this particular solicitation, we're able to negotiate this contract from, I believe it's $68,000 or $62,000? $62,000 on the previous contract to $100,000 on the current contract, which our purchasing manager, Yves Alcides Guzman, did a good job on as well as researching what the kind of industry standard in terms of that guaranteed revenue was.
Thank you. We have one person signed up from the public, James Jennings.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. I'm not here for a variance. I'm just here to thank the city staff and to thank the commissioners for, again, choosing Emerald Transportation to continue on as your vendor. As far as our family being part of the community, we've been part of this community for many, many years. And we've always had a great working relationship with the city and with the city staff and Broward Sheriff's Office and Broward Fire Rescue. And we're looking forward, from my family and my staff and everyone that works at Emerald Towing, we're really looking forward to continuing this relationship. So, thank you very much. And I'm here if you have any questions, obviously.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? I'm going to close it to the public. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner Hudak and then Vice Muradrosky.
I'd like to disclose that I did receive a political contribution from Emerald Towing, and I'd also like to make a motion to approve this.
Vice Muradrosky?
I just wanted to disclose that I received a campaign contribution from Emerald Towing in 2017.
Thank you. Commissioner Preston?
I did not receive a contribution, but I will second it.
We have a motion and we have a second by Commissioner Preston. Commissioner Parnas, did you want to comment?
I also did not receive.
I believe I did, but I think that's in the backup, so. We have a motion, a second, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Muradrosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Item number nine is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving contract JZ 119062020 between the Area Wide Counsel on Aging of Broward County, Inc. for the service delivery for the Center for Active Aging and Alzheimer's Day Care Center in an amount not to exceed $243,830.85, providing for an effective date.
Anyone from the public here to comment on item number nine? I'm going to close it to the public. Commission?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion from Commissioner Preston and Commissioner Parnas?
Second.
We have a second for Commissioner Parnas. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Muradrosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Item number 10 is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving contract number JL 119-062020 with the Area Wide Counsel on Aging of Broward County, Inc. for adult daycare and transportation services for the Center for Active Aging in an amount not to exceed $132,380, authorizing execution of the contract, providing for an effective date.
Anyone from the public here to comment on item number 10? I'm going to close it to the public. Commission, Commissioner Parnas?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Parnas, second by Commissioner Preston. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Muradrosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Yes.
Item number 11 is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, authorizing waiver of the competitive solicitation requirements of Section 38-127 of the City Code, authorizing execution of an agreement with United Way in an amount not to exceed $20,000 to continue participation in the United Way Reading Palace program, authorizing execution of a contract, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? I'm going to close it to the public. Commission comments on this? And maybe city manager, a little explanation on this particular item as far as why we're approaching it this way?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So just to get about understanding what this program is, I think it was at the last meeting we recognized those individuals who participated in the Tiered Maintenance Reading Palace program. That's exactly what this is. We do have to purchase certain supplies through the United Way to participate in this program. And so since we are entering to an agreement with the United Way to purchase those supplies and there's really no other way to do it, we asked for this waiver in order to comply with the program.
Okay. Thank you. Commission? Commissioner Parnas?
Motion to approve.
I'm going to go with the guy with the light first. Commissioner Parnas, we'll have your motion. Commissioner Preston, you seconding?
Second.
Thank you. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Muradrosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Item number 12 is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving amendment number one to the HL 101 agreement with the Department of Economic Opportunity for the development and completion of the Bran Hilda, Richardson Knolls Memorial Park and Cemetery, providing for an effective date.
Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? I'm going to close it to the public. Commission?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Muradrosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Item number 13 is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving a change order to the agreement with FG Construction LLC for Southeast 15th Avenue Bridge Repairs in the amount of $14,000, ratifying the emergency purchase of bridge repair services from FG Construction LLC, providing for an effective date.
Okay. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. For this item, some meetings ago, I came before you at a city commission meeting and to letting you know that I had authorized an emergency procurement for the bridge repair pursuant to a Broward County contract, I believe it was, yes, Broward County contract for those construction services. That $50,000 is within my authority under the procurement code for emergency procurements. Subsequent to entering into that agreement, some additional work was found to be needed. And obviously with those, that construction team being out there doing the work, we could not stop, obviously, to have them, to have this item come before you for the expediency of getting that bridge back up. So what this is, is that's that additional work that was found to be needed out in the field in the amount of $14,000. And with that putting us over the cap of $50,000, this is coming before you for ratification.
That additional work, based on what the feedbacks, or the backup says, was based on community feedback in which they wanted something put in a little bit different. They wanted sod put in. Is that the reason for this entire line item or is there more to it?
I'll let Priscilla come down and give the details of what exactly that $14,000 was. Thank you.
Good evening. Priscilla Segal, Assistant Director for Engineering and Operations. The additional $14,000 was for, I do have a slideshow that shows some images, but it's essentially for a bridge attachment of the guardrail to the parapet walls. The contractor had missed this in his quote and it became apparent with a set of subsequent drawings that I submitted to him prior to the work being completed. And it came to his awareness at that point. And so thus, he indicated that this would be an additional cost. In addition to that, the homeowners on the four corners of the bridge indicated that they did not want asphalt, which is a standard detail for guardrail installation, and instead wanted sod to be installed. So we did, to comply with the wishes of the public, install sod in lieu of asphalt. I can show you some images of what we've done. This was the damage that had occurred to the bridge and the subsequent images show the completed bridge with the compliant guardrail and parapet walls completed. But the attachment to the bridge was what had been missing from his quote. These are all line items that were in Broward County's contract, so they're set values. It had simply been an omission that hadn't been on the drawings that had been given to him to quote from and were subsequently given to him in a final signed and sealed set.
So who's, who overlooked that? The plans that were sent to him?
Yes, the plans that were sent to him were a draft set for his quote per the Broward County contract. The line items are set, so the costs are set. However, the line item was an FDOT line item and it didn't have an exact equivalent in Broward County line items. So thus, it wasn't immediately apparent.
Okay. So that's a little bit different, then he overlooked something and we should pay the price for it?
Correct. No, it had been that they weren't apple to apple. And so thus, when we had a full itemization in a subsequent signed and sealed set, it came to everybody's awareness at that point.
Okay. Have we learned from that?
In essence, you know, we were trying to expedite this project so much that, you know, we did submit a draft set for quoting. And when we finally got to getting the project underway, we had a signed and sealed set for it to work for and from. So yes, absolutely. We typically do not work from a draft set, but in expediency, we did get a quote off a draft set of plans.
And since we were the ones pushing for the expediency, I totally understand. Commissioner Hudak?
I just want to personally thank everybody for getting it done. I know it was a while to get started, but as soon as it got started, you know, Mr. Good, Priscilla?
And I will say that.
City manager, thank you very much. I think the residents really appreciate it and all of your extra work too. So thank you.
I can say that the contractor was very accommodating. They immediately got to work when we requested that they start on this bridge. They completed the work within two weeks, which exceeded our expectations. So really, it was not, I didn't want to hold them over the barrel so much and lose a good relationship with somebody who, you know, was really willing to work with us. So really, in that, in the essence of working together, you know, I feel like this is the best thing to do.
We would have had to pay it either way.
Right.
Had it been in there.
And better not to, you know, ruin a good relationship and...
Okay. Thank you. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
I have a question.
Do you need to come up to the podium, please? Name an address for the record.
Lee's Mill O'Clock in 1998 27th Street. So originally, so now the bridge is complete, but it's going to last for a long time? Because originally, it was like a tremendous amount of money when we first had this meeting about the bridge. So now, the bridge is finished?
No. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public? No, what this was, was just to make the repairs for the damage that was done by the vehicle to make that bridge to be used again. So that was the reason why there's still going to be study in looking into more permanent resolution to the issues. Commission? I think I closed it to the public already.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hudak, second by Commissioner Parnas. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas? Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Muradrosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, items 14, 15 and 16, I believe, are related. If it's commission's pleasure, I can read those titles into the record now and they can be addressed definitively.
Is there anyone that would like to comment on item number 14, 15 and 16?
Do you have comments?
Okay.
Yeah, not any, I mean, you could still hold separate public hearings if...
But we can wait. All right, we'll hold on that, but we do have someone who would like to speak. City manager, I'll let you go first.
Read the titles. Want me to read the titles first?
Yeah, that makes more sense.
Yeah, we're talking, thanks. Item 14, in accordance with the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, authorizing the execution, delivery of a lease purchase agreement in an amount not to exceed $9,815,000 with respect to the acquisition, purchase, financing and leasing of certain equipment, authorizing execution, delivery of documents required in connection therewith, providing certain other matters in connection with such lease purchase and providing an effective date. I'm going to go ahead and read 15 and 16 and I'll make sure they get addressed separately as needed. Item 15 is a resolution of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the award of RFP number 2018-19/34 for financing for energy performance projects. The TD Equipment Finance, Inc., authorizing and directing the negotiation of a contract with TD Equipment Finance, Inc. for financing an amount not to exceed $10 million over a 15-year term at a fixed rate, not to exceed the rates in TD's proposal. And finally, item number 16, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, authorizing a guaranteed energy, water and wastewater performance savings agreement with Siemens Industry, Inc. for energy performance contracts and services and authorizing execution of that agreement in an amount not to exceed $9,669,738.
Okay. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We've had, we've had a workshop on this where we spent some time with the city commission going through exactly what this energy performance contract is, how long the city has been working on this particular project and the items before you being what it would take to accomplish this. I, what I'd like to do at this time is to request that the city commission table all three of these, these items, 14, 15 and 16, and also allow Siemens to provide a little bit of explanation as to why I'm making that request.
Okay. Commission?
I think it's a great idea.
I guess we should hear from Siemens at this point. Or Commissioner Preston, then Commissioner Parnas?
Yeah, me too.
Good afternoon, Commission. My name is Chris Summers. I am the general manager for the Southeast Zone for Building Performance Contracting for Siemens. And I would like to address some of what the city managers talked about and why we want to pull it. If I could, I'd just like to take a second to sort of review a little bit of history of how we've gotten to this point today. So roughly two years ago, the city issued an RFQ for a guaranteed performance contracting services. And Siemens was honored that we were selected by the city to be your partner. For the last year, we have been working diligently with city staff. And as you can imagine, the amount of effort it takes to work through projects of this size is a lot, specifically for the city staff. They were very helpful and engaging in making sure they were responsive to our needs and answering our questions throughout this whole process. And what we're hoping to be able to provide to you in the near future is the project that you have in front of you. What that is going to do is get the city to its missions of being sustainable. And in my opinion, this project will put the city as a leader in Florida when it comes to sustainability, energy efficiency and city modernization. So if I could, Siemens is a large Fortune 50 company that has a lot of products and services that are done and sold throughout the world. The holding company, or I call the parent company, is named Siemens AG. And in the U.S., we're the Siemens industry for U.S. And they have over 100 different subsidiaries and divisions in Siemens that are doing this, selling services and products throughout the world. Now, all that to be said, in 2018, beginning part of 2018, one of the Siemens subsidiaries in Africa, in Africa, being managed out of South Africa, was awarded a project in the Sudan. This project entailed providing services and maintenance to two electrical facilities in the country that was to expand electrical grids and provide better reliability for the people of Sudan. Some of these are for the impoverished people. So you're probably asking, what does that have to do with the city of Deerfield Beach? I know I asked that question when I heard about it. In Florida, there's a statute, statute references 287-135. This is the Protection of Florida Investment Act. Never really heard it before. I do now know it quite well now. That the, the intent of the act is there's a handful of countries that if you do certain work in those countries, you have to meet certain criterias and do extra things. Sudan is on the list for this particular statute. And to do the power grid upgrades that we're doing requires that the project has to have a humanitarian component to the project. So I'd like to go through a little bit of history here, you know, of, to get where we've gotten. The governing agency over this statute is the SBA for Florida. And if you do not meet the requirements of providing this humanitarian act, you will be put on a scrutinized company list. And what that means is you will not be allowed to do work for state agencies and local governments in the state of Florida if you're on this list. And I said, we were awarded Siemens in Africa, the subsidiary was awarded this project at the beginning of 2018. In June 2018, the FBA put Siemens AG on what's called a watch list, which is common as I understand it, is you, you have a project there, you need to be monitoring for the humanitarian component. When reviewing the meeting minutes over the last several meetings that they've had, there is no mention of any issues or correspondence related to the project with the humanitarian efforts. However, on June 4th of this year, the SBA put Siemens AG and five of subsidiaries on the scrutinized companies list. Now, being that this is to a different subsidiary than where we work at, we did not find this information out until Wednesday, late Wednesday of last week. And we've been sort of scrambling to make sure we understood the impact to the city. Since that time, our, our corporate people from Siemens AG, which is based out of Germany, has been working diligently to understand why Siemens AG was put on this list. It is Siemens' position that we have done everything correctly and we've done all the requirements for the humanitarian efforts of this project. Since June 4th, there has been at least two correspondence with the SBA to understand why Siemens was put on this list and to get us on the next meeting agenda, which is scheduled for July 23rd. So this is a fluid situation that we're, Siemens is taking very seriously, and we will have this addressed in a very short order. However, since we are on this list at this time, we needed to bring it to your attention. And it is our ask that the city would allow Siemens to have this represented at a future board meeting, once we get this addressed. I know this impacts the city, you know, and we're very close to bringing this project to fruition. In fact, I was supposed to be here tonight to be as a support for the city, to answer any potential questions you may have that they couldn't answer as you were to vote on this. Unfortunately, I'm here having to talk to you and explain the situation of why we're making this request. If the city is so inclined to allow us to table this and be able to bring it back in an effort to help facilitate moving this project forward in the future, so you were able to receive the benefits of this project as soon as possible, Siemens will be willing to continue on with the process. And what that means is if we were to approve this project today, our first steps would be to do final designs on several of the projects, one of them being CNG, so we can, things get sized and ordered. Siemens would be willing, at its risk, as we get this handled, is to continue this, this process forward to ensure that the city, when this actually happens, it would hopefully get approved, you would reap the savings associated with this project sooner than later. I'll open it up for any questions.
Thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak again. And the one, the one thing I did not, that I did not say earlier was, I'm actually looking for a, to have these items tabled to a time certain, which would be the first meeting in August, and that would be the sixth, August 6th, which if they're able to, to rectify the situation at that July 23rd meeting, we would then have enough time to bring this before you for first reading on the sixth in relation to item number, that'd be fourteen, and then for second reading thereafter.
Commission comments? City Attorney?
Yeah, I'm just, you heard the item and you're going to, you may take action. So even though you might not be voting yes or no, potentially, I would still suggest that you open it up to the public.
Okay. Jill, I'm sorry if I open to the public first. Anyone from the public here to comment on item fourteen, fifteen, or sixteen?
One Sullivan, 2377 Dick Trail, Deerfield Beach, Florida. On item fifteen, you identify some capital costs that are going to be expended on this project, five hundred and some odd thousand dollars, but there are various accounts. Could you give us a recording of each specific account that money's going to be drawn from? On item sixteen, hopefully, this will give the city time to do what I think they need to do. But I would wager that all of you on the dais never paid manufacturers' suggested retail price, or MSRP, for a new vehicle, or the asking price on a home. You researched and found information that would support a lower offer and you negotiated to the lower the price. After all, even though you were financing the purchase, the selling price determined the loan value and the total money that you would pay back over the term of the loan. So here we have a non-complex and low-risk effort to replace air conditioning units, provide a compressed natural gas service station, install weather stripping, and change indoor and outdoor, outdoor lights. The one risk identified was the installation of the natural gas line, according to the staff that I talked to, and that was monetized and included in the bid. All this work will be subcontracted by Siemens. I'll repeat, all of this work will be subcontracted by Siemens. So it's hard to believe why one would not question why Siemens will be getting over 1.7 million dollars just for the overhead and profit on these subcontracted efforts, and another 1.2 million to manage the effort. So without turning a wrench or manufacturing anything, the taxpayer will shell out 2.9 million dollars, or 30% of the total cost, when our city staff could easily contract for these items. Now, I'm sure you'll hear about the savings guarantee that Siemens will sign up for. If in any year, our savings do not cover the principal and interest on our loan, Siemens would write a check for the difference. Well, that's good, until you realize that we, as the taxpayer, are paying nearly 200,000 dollars a year, that's the 2.9 million that we're paying for overhead management and subcontracting, divided by the 15-year term of the loan, for the potential to save maybe a couple of thousand. And that assumes that the city will have met all the contract terms and conditions, or if legally, the company does not have to pay. So what I believe to be, in a spirit of cooperation, I met with city staff, exchanged numerous emails, and after reviewing the audit report, and a lower breakout of hours and rates that Siemens provided on their management effort, I provided an evaluation of the proposal, including five areas that could be negotiated. After all, I've done this for 32 years with majors, defense contractors. May I have another minute, please?
Yes, you can.
Actually, could I have a little bit more time since we're discussing three items?
No. Yeah, actually, you can. That's a good point.
I won't take the full mark. In addition, there were three additional questions for Siemens to answer to determine the reasonableness of their proposal. After all, we all want a business transaction that both parties are happy with, including the taxpayer. Instead, once I sent the evaluation, the wall of silence rose. No reply to my evaluation of questions, which I find rather insulting after the work I did. So instead of negotiating something all of you do with your money, you choose to pay an unreasonable cost at the expense of the taxpayer. Instead of being stewards of the taxpayer funds, you hand it out unnecessarily. So if you choose to reply to my comments, that the deal saves money, even at the end of the long term, remember that it could have been more if we had negotiated and found a reasonable price. If you say the team did evaluate the proposal, tell me why they did not have the cost breakout until I asked for it. Tell me what the profit rate proposed by Siemens was for their work. Tell me if their proposed costs are based on supplier proposals, which they evidently are not, since they don't even have a design for the CNG, so their proposed numbers is estimated. Tell me if their proposed costs were based on supplier proposals or simply estimates, and if quantity buys were priced in for the number of air conditioners to remove or replace, or were they singly priced? I don't know. Any one of you voting yes on this contract in August are not fulfilling your fiduciary duty to the taxpayers, nor complying with federal statute if you don't do a defined, detailed evaluation of cost. Florida statute states, and I'll just say, read a bit of it, "The agency shall nego, excuse me, shall negotiate a contract with the most qualified firm for professional services at compensation what the agency determines is fair, competitive, and reasonable. In making such determination, the agency shall conduct a detailed analysis of the cost of the professional services required in addition to considering their scope and complexity." I sure hope the city now will take the time to do what they are required to do and save the taxpayer money where it's, where it's necessitated. And I'd like an answer to my questions, since it appears that I'm, I'm the only one that can evaluate a proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Am I closing it to the public? Commissioner Parnas?
Yeah, if the commission would like, I think we should table these items till it's cleared up as proposed.
I'm just going to make a recommendation. This is like a Roberts Rules of Order, very technical thing, but since, if, if you were going to go with the date certain that your manager proposed, I would just suggest you just call it a continuance to that date. Generally, when you table it, you're not specifying a date when you're going to bring it back again.
Okay.
The commission calls the table, little Roberts rules there for you.
So you want, would you like a continuance to date certain?
Yes.
Was that, was that the August 6th date for clarification that the city manager proposed?
We have a motion. Do we have a, Commissioner Preston?
Yes, before we continue, you know, when I was looking at the backup, I had some, some questions about a few things. I got, actually, I was enamored with the, the savings, and I got caught up in pretty much the savings that the city would have. However, when I started thinking about it, the audit report, the, in, in the audit report, and that's that point at which, you know, there's a cost to fix whatever is identified or whatever problems exist. And in that proposed evaluation, you know, whatever that price is, that's, I mean, that's like an estimate of like where you're going to be. And I think that those, when you look at a price, the city ought to be able to try to save its taxpayers' money, and we need to negotiate that price, no matter what it is. When you're looking at savings versus cost, you're thinking about, I'm saving this much amount of money. But on that cost side, if that cost side is looked at and it's evaluated and it's negotiated, we can actually save more money. And I didn't think about this until I thought about my own personal situation of recently buying a car. When I went to buy my van, I did not, I looked at that sticker price, the, the, you know, and, and Toyota was right across the street. And so the Honda dealer and I, the salesman and I, began looking at a lot of the difference cost that was on that van, and they were looking at about 40,000 dollars, and I wasn't going to pay 40,000 dollars. And I think that the city ought to look at if, when we have, you know, a proposed, a quote for anything, we ought to really look at that. For instance, if you're talking about Siemens replacing the air conditioning units, well, okay, it costs whatever, how'd you come up with that? How'd you come up with that cost? Did you just say that? I'd like to know, how did they come up with that cost? And can that be negotiated? Maybe you can't negotiate every phase of it, but there are things that we can do to help, to help the taxpayers save money. But if we look at a quote, and whatever it is, we go with it, how much are we really saving? The key is, is in the saving versus the cost. And on that cost side, I think that we can even save some more. You know, I'm going to just take my situation. I was able to get a decent price because the Honda knew that if they didn't give me a good price, irregardless of what was going to happen, I was going to walk, and I was going to go right across the street. And guess what? Some people could say the same thing. You know what? Well, what if Siemens go? Well, guess what? If we're going to invest a lot of money, let's try to get the best price that we can if we're going to give you the job. These prices need to be negotiated.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion for this to be tabled to date certain? Do we have a second? Motion, a second? Let's hope some of the points have been brought up that we can, we've got plenty of time now to get some of these questions answered, hopefully. Okay. We have roll call, please?
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Item number 17 is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, relating to the provision of fire rescue services, facilities, and programs in the city of Deerfield Beach, describing the method of assessing fire rescue assessed costs against assessed property located within the city of Deerfield Beach, directing the preparation of an assessment role, authorizing a public hearing and directing the provision of notice thereof, and providing an effective date.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We have had a, we have had a fire assessment fee till, since 2002, and every year, we have to go ahead and set that rate. And the rate is based off of a very detailed study and analysis that is conducted by a consultant, in this case, GSG, and I don't know Jeff's last name, so I'm just calling Mr. Jeff.
Jeff Rackland.
Jeff Rackland, thank you, who conducted that for us this year. Jeff's going to go ahead and give us a presentation on the study that he conducted for us over the course of this past year. But just a little bit of background, the current, the current fee we have in place today has, has been in place for over six years now. That rate has not changed. And the study base that, that's formulated, that the rates for both residential, commercial, and institutional, which Jeff will explain what those classifications are here in a minute, that's, the, the rates are based off a study that's even older than that. So from time to time, it's, it's prudent for the administration to review those studies and have the study updated and bring that forth before the city commission to ensure that we are in compliance with the statutes which allow for this particular fee, which also, by the way, does not cover the entire fire rescue services provided to the residents and businesses throughout the city. The fire assessment fee is only for the fire portion of the services of, of that whole operation. And he'll go into more detail on that. And I'll certainly be available to answer some additional questions and input, but I'd like to hand it over to Jeff to provide his presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. As City Manager said, we've been working with staff for the last several months to update the city's existing fire assessment program. This has been in place for a number of years. We haven't changed the methodology at all. We're basically updating the data and everything that goes into calculating the rates. And we'll kind of walk through those calculations. Everything you see, up to a point, we'll, we'll kind of show you the maximum assessment rates that the city could adopt. Of course, the board has the ability to adopt any rate level under that amount, so we're setting the maximum rate is what we're trying to get to here tonight. And then we'll give you some options and have some discussion on that. But feel free to ask any questions as we go through this. I'll try to go through it fairly quickly. I know it's getting late, but, but if you have any questions, we'll definitely answer those. So the first slide here is just showing you your existing rate structure. The existing residential rate is 175 per dwelling unit, so that's 175 for a single-family home, 175 times two for a duplex, three for a triplex. If it's 50 apartments, it's 50 times 175. Then you can see the rates for your commercial, industrial, warehouse, and institutional properties are tiered rates based on their square footage. That's per building, so not per parcel, so it's each building on a parcel of property. Commercial properties, of course, are any office, retail, restaurants, any types of properties like that. Industrial warehouse is kind of self-explanatory, any kind of manufacturing and/or storage-type properties. Institutional is where you find your schools, most of your government-owned, government-owned properties, nursing homes, those types of, of things. Nonprofit organizations, churches as well, fall into the institutional category. Nonprofit organizations, churches as well, fall into the institutional category. So the next slide here just shows you the budget. What we, what we try to look at is a five-year average budget, and generally, what's recommended is that you, you look at this every three to five years or so, just to account for any changes in not only your budget, but your call data and property data, as well as the services being offered. So, we base everything, in this study, on that five-year average assessable budget. You can see all your expenditures there, some CIP that is in there, you get your total expenditures. We net out any revenues, and this is all, as the City Manager said, just the fire side of things. So this is anything that's fire-related, doesn't include EMS costs above fire first responder. So we net out any fire-related revenues to get your net expenditures, and then add in your additional costs there, which is mainly statutory discount that folks get for paying their taxes early each year, to get your total assessable costs. And the far-right column, that bottom-line number is nineteen million, two twenty-eight, five sixty-nine. That's what these calculations will be based on moving through the presentation. This is just something that we put in there to show you some of the additional fire-related capital needs that, that are either existing or will be coming up in the next few years. So, so we're not only talking about, of course, increased costs over a five-year period, in addition to that, your rates haven't changed in, in a number of years, and we'll kind of show that going through as well. But you also have some fairly large capital costs. Some of this, it's my understanding, is, is some mandatory stuff with some, some radio compliance issues, and some other apparatus that I think is, is fairly close to the end of its useful life, if not past that perhaps. So there's, there's some, some things that aren't optional, that, that, that are coming down the line as well to keep in mind as, as we go, go through this. So we talked about, about the budget. The, the call data is kind of the second piece of the puzzle here, so we use the call data to split the costs amongst the different property categories, and you'll kind of see that on the next slide. But we looked at calendar year two thousand and eighteen call data, and you can see there that sixty-three point two-one percent of your calls are to residential properties. That's kind of what you would expect, the bulk of your properties within the city are residential, so it makes sense that they would generate the highest volume of calls. Then, commercial, institutional, industrial warehouse, and this is pretty typical, this is what we would expect to see, and similar to what we see in, in the other Broward cities that we work with as well. The call volume and distribution was also fairly in line with what we saw the last time we did this study a few years ago, although there were some slight shifts going back to the, I believe is a two thousand and eleven or two thousand and twelve study, which your current rates are based on. So, as we said, you can see the calls here, and this is just fire calls that we're talking about, so not EMS calls, and only, the calls you see here are to those specific property types. So, so we're talking about calls to residential, commercial, industrial, warehouse, and institutional properties only, and only fire first responder calls. You can see those percentages there that we saw in the previous chart, and then you can see the allocation of the five-year average assessable cost. So residential accounts for sixty-three point two-one percent of the calls. Residential properties as a whole are going to, going to fund sixty-three point two-one percent of your assessable budget. Same thing with the other categories, they're, each category's gonna fund their proportional share of the cost based on their calls for service. And you can see all, all the other categories there, and the amount of the five-year average budget they would be responsible for. So once we allocate those costs to the individual categories, we're then further allocating the cost to the individual properties or, and the individual buildings or units on each property. So for residential, it's a per-dwelling-unit charge. For the non-residential categories, the commercial, industrial, warehouse, and institutional, it's per-building within the square-foot tiers. This is the same as it has been, I believe, going back to two thousand and two. I'm not, I don't believe there's been any changes to the underlying methodology. I know at least going back to two thousand and eleven, none of those tiers have changed, nor has the per-dwelling-unit allocation changed. So you can see the number of units here within each proper-use category. This is also fairly close to what we saw going back historically. I believe there were some slight increases in residential dwelling units, some changes here and there within the different categories, but overall, not a lot of changes, which is what we'd expect to see in a city like Deerfield Beach. It's, you know, essentially a fully built-out city, so you wouldn't expect to see tons of new residential construction. If you're building something new, you're almost tearing down something else or redeveloping, so we wouldn't expect to see a lot of drastic changes in, in the number of, of units, and that's basically what we saw. So we, we take that budget, we're allocating it to the property categories, and then dividing through by the number of units in each category to get a rate per unit. And as we said, this is the maximum rates based on that five-year average budget. The per-dwelling-unit rate would be three hundred and one dollars. You can see the rates for the other property categories there as we work through the map. These are not necessarily the rates that the board has to adopt, but this, these are the rates that it would take to fully fund that five-year average assessable budget that was developed. You can see there at the bottom, and we'll kind of talk about that going forward, well, the estimated gross revenue ties to the five-year average budget. The estimated exempt buy-down is for your government and institutional tax-exempt properties. So basically, what we have is the city is paying on behalf of those entities. For the government properties, it kind of makes sense, most of those properties are your own properties anyways. Or there are other governmental entities that aren't getting a tax bill, you can't really force them to pay the assessment. So, around the state, I'd say ninety-nine percent of our clients, there's only one that I can think of that charges government property, and they're not collecting their assessment on the tax bill, they're collecting it on the utility bill. And it's the city of Tallahassee, which is different altogether with the number of government property owners they have there with two large universities, a large community college, all the state government, local government, et cetera. So it's a little bit of a different situation. The institutional tax-exempt properties, technically, you can charge those properties, so that would be things like nonprofit organizations, boys and girls clubs, churches, those types of entities. Once again, the vast majority of our clients around the state are not charging those properties. Those properties are exempt from abhorrent taxes. Generally, that exemption is carried over to the non-abhorrent assessments, although it's not required. You could charge them the full rates or any portion of those rates, so you could partially exempt those properties if you wish to do so. Historically, you've always fully exempted those properties, but just to mention that there are some options there. Those properties are using the services, so there's a cost there, and the city does have to basically fund that on behalf of those entities if they aren't charged for all or some portion of their cost of using the services. So the next few slides just give you some different rate options. That's not to say that you have to specifically pick one of these options, you could choose any funding level. You can see here, this is ninety-one point five-nine percent at a two seventy-five residential rate, and the corresponding non-residential rates. The main thing to keep in mind is these proportions have to stay constant, so you can't decide you want to fund residential at seventy-five percent, but the other categories at ninety percent. So if you wanted to see some other options, we could give you those options. You know, if you wanted to see it ninety percent, or you wanted to see rates that correspond to a two hundred and sixty-dollar residential rate and those non-residential rates, or, or a certain revenue target you're trying to hit, we can give you any of those options, but we've kind of given you some options here in the presentation for illustration purposes anyways. The two hundred and fifty-dollar rates you can see here, and the corresponding non-residential rates, you can see, of course, the revenue's slightly lower, the buy-down, estimated net revenue. And then the two twenty-five residential rate, corresponding non-residential rates. And then at one seventy-five, what I will point out here is that due to the, primarily to the shifts in the call data, the one seventy-five residential rate and corresponding non-residential rates does not fund as much as your current one seventy-five rate structure does. So if you are electing to keep the one seventy-five residential rate, you should realize that that's gonna result in a loss of revenue from where you are currently. That's, as I said, primarily due to the shift in call data, which we kind of saw when we looked at things a few years ago, although that study wasn't taken forward at that point. And now we're several years later, and that, that shift in the call data is still there and perhaps more pronounced than it was before, so just to point that out. The one seventy-five residential rate and that rate structure does not fund what it did previously.
What's the magic number that does?
Um, I would have to look at that. I think you're somewhere, I don't know-
I can go ahead and answer that. That's, that's around the two fifteen residential mark.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit of a moving target. The property data changes some, and there's some rounding in there, but it's, it's definitely north of two hundred dollars. I don't know if it's exactly two ten, two eleven, or exactly where it's at, but somewhere in that range. So, this is just kind of that same information summed up, and with the buy-down or exempt amounts broken out, so you can see the portion of that that is tied to those institutional tax-exempt properties being schools, or being, I'm sorry, churches, non-for-profits, boys and girls clubs, those type of things, versus your government-owned properties like police stations, fire stations, post offices, schools, all those types of properties. And then your estimated net revenue for these different scenarios. Similar information here with the difference being that, really, that far-right column, which is gonna show you an estimated amount after the statutory discount. So, the majority of your property owners are residential. The majority of your property owners likely have a mortgage on their property, so it's escrow, they're paying their taxes the earliest date possible, so they're getting that full statutory discount. So we're showing you a more reasonable number of what you'll actually collect there in that far-right-hand column for the different rate scenarios, and there's some, some additional scenarios thrown in there as well. As, as we mentioned, the rates have not changed in a number of years, even though your, your costs have continued to increase to provide services. Taking into account additional capital costs as well that are coming down the line, and given the amount of time that you haven't seen a rate increase, it kind of makes sense that you're, you know, potentially looking at a larger rate increase at this point to, to kind of keep up with, with everything. You can see there, historically, you're looking at a rate increase every couple of years, every year for a while there, and then every three years or so, so we're well past that. So the rates have been stable going back to two thousand and fourteen with no, no changes. But this just kind of shows you where your, your residential assessment rate is in comparison with the other Broward cities. I, I think it's good information, so you can kind of see how your, your rates are and that they're low in comparison to most of the other cities, and well below the average. Part of that reason, of course, is you haven't seen a rate increase in, what, six years or so. Keep in mind, though, that the, the fire assessment is just one portion of, of the funding for fire rescue, so there's other things to keep in mind. You know, what, what level of service are these other cities providing? Are they providing it themselves, or is it through some contract provider, e- either VSO or neighboring city? What is the quality of those services? Do they have other revenue streams, whether it be training academies, or are they funding a larger or smaller portion through abhorrent taxes? Or, you know, there's a whole host of, of different things that are gonna play into that, so that, that fire assessment is just one piece of that when, when you're looking at this. So you can see here, just showing similar information, but it's showing you the rates currently for, for this, this past year and two thousand and fifteen. So of course, your rates haven't changed. You can see a lot of the other cities have seen increases over that time period. Also, I know that we are currently working with several of the other cities in the county this year, and we're gonna be working with several next year, so I, I don't know for sure if all of those are gonna see a rate increase, but I'd say it's very likely that, that a number of them are going to, to see rate increases over this year or next year as well. So, it's something to, to keep in mind, those averages are likely going to be, going up. So, tonight, basically where we're at is, is setting the preliminary rates, so these are, are basically, just like with your millage, you're setting a tentative rate or your maximum rate. Tonight, you can always go down at that public hearing on September twelfth, but you can't increase the rates at that point. So, keep that in mind as you're, you're adopting a resolution with your proposed rates tonight. These are the rates that will go on the TRAM notices, so all property owners will see their assessment amounts on TRAM. And you can't decrease the rates on September, or you can't increase the rates on September twelfth, but you would have the option to decrease the rates at that point from what, what you're adopting tonight. And that's all. I have any questions for me? I'll definitely try to answer them as best as I can.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I have a question.
Commissioner Partes?
Yeah. Obviously, the rate has to go up. But I want it to go up on a gradual basis, in my opinion. If it went up five percent a year for the next five years, you'd reach your goal without banging the taxpayer in the face in one shot. People are very sensitive about when they get hit. All of a sudden, your fire fee went from one seventy-five to two fifty. I know I'd be upset, and I'm sure many of my constituents would be upset in one shot. I mean, we've been paying the balance for how many years now, while we don't raise with the fire fee? Ten years or so?
Yeah, so you, you've never actually funded it at a hundred percent-
Right, that's what I'm getting at.
Exactly.
And to go up, to fund it at a hundred percent in one shot, would, I think, would hurt the constituents in, in the city. I'd like to see it go up in a digestible rate, so that we don't have to borrow or take money from other departments to pay, it's all tax money. It, it is all tax money, so whether we have the fire fee and we, we take some from another, from our general taxes fund to balance, the balance, it's still tax money. I would not like to see them get hit with a large increase in one year. I don't think- I don't think it's fair to them and I don't think it really accomplishes the purpose.
And I can address that.
If you'd like.
I was just going to point out that it is an annual decision, so you would be setting the rates and adopting rates for this year. Each year you would revisit that and you would have the ability to raise or lower the rates each year, so.
Fine.
Okay.
Commissioner Preston and Commissioner Hudek?
It's very tough on residents when we just keep, you know, adding to their issues monetarily. It gets tough. You know what they do understand? They don't look always in terms of how you have laid this out, but let's say stormwater, here's what they'll look at, is that the city brings in X amount of dollars, $7 million, $8 million, whatever it is. And now with the fire assessment, there's another $4 or $5 million and now you're asking for something else. I was really challenged with this, but I also know that if we do nothing, then they're going to be hit with that big ticket. So I kind of agree with Commissioner Parnas that there has to be that medium ground where we make this as easy as possible. And I think whenever you're taking money from people, I don't know that it's ever easy, because, you know, a lot of people own fixed incomes. So this is going to be, you know, a tough situation either way we do it.
Commissioner Hudek?
I mean, I'm in agreement. If you raised it up to 250 from 175, that's $6.25 a month. And there are a lot of residents that are on a fixed income, so it does adversely affect them. But then again, we haven't had an increase in six years and there are only three other cities that can say that. And one of them is actually unincorporated Broward County. We have to look at the, we have to look at our citizens and we have to protect our citizens. Our first responders are also our citizens and they're the ones who protect us. On Saturday, I went to Firehouse 75 because I wanted to get from them some of the challenges that our first responders are facing, because I know that that firehouse and the one that's off of Federal Highway in Hillsborough are in dire need of repair. Just a quick look around, the roof leaks, structural damage on the southeast corner, the front door leaks. There's no second means of egress, there's no backup generator. The exhaust system in that system, the fire trucks take 90 seconds in order to build up enough pressure in order to be able to move. So for that 90 seconds, all of that soot and all of that exhaust is being dumped into the bays. Now, they have an exhaust system that was built in the 70s that they've kind of jerry-rigged to try to give it some relief. But we've really kicked the can down too far now and I understand the challenges of increasing these costs to the residents, but I also understand the challenges that if we don't do something, we're adversely affecting them. And I want to make sure that we have a safe city and one of the things we need to do is provide our first responders with the tools and the equipment that they need to make sure that our citizens are safe.
Thank you, Commissioner. Look, if you, at $4 a month is what the increase would be if you raised it by $50 to the resident. Am I right?
Approximately.
Yeah. It's $4 a month. It's not a slap in the face. It's not breaking anybody's bank. A lot of the people that can't afford the $4 probably aren't paying any taxes in the first place. This is one of the few places where we could actually, everybody gets hit evenly. Where you're going to hear it from though, is from the businesses. You're going to hear it from, maybe not the larger ones, because they can absorb that. If you've got over a 50,000 square foot property that you're doing business out of in the city of Deerfield Beach, odds are that that's the cost of doing business and they understand that. But $4 a month is not going to kill them. The reality is, the cost of providing the services continues to go up. That's just the way it is. I've heard, I've been doing this a long time, we've heard this before. Well, gosh, when they started this back in 2000-something, it was only $50. Well, yeah, that's great. And the price of gas was what? And, you know, things go up. Be realistic. That's the truth. And you've got to cover those costs. And right now, we're not, and we've gone six years without doing it. Fort Lauderdale is proposing a $55 increase to theirs, which if you look at what their current rate is now, that would put them over the $300 mark. That's what they're looking to propose. I think it's going to be 310 is about what they're looking to do for this upcoming budget. We've been good at holding the cost on that, but obviously the cost of providing the services gone up, that has to be spread out. If you want to lessen that impact, then start talking to the nonprofits. Way back when we started looking at the nonprofits, we had over 400, because I had a private citizen go and look at it. We had over 400 nonprofits at that time, eight years ago, registered in the city of Deerfield Beach that paid zero taxes, paid zero on the fire assessment fee. We actually put it in there where they would pay. And let me tell you what happened, just like it does a government every time, the pendulum swung too far one way and we swung it back the other way and they eliminated it entirely, because that was a slap in the face and it was a huge hit to them, they weren't prepared for it. But if you do a small percentage and look at the nonprofits, a very small percentage, maybe you would lighten that $4 a month cost if we go with a $50 increase. But I don't, I understand, nobody likes to raise anything, we always want to lower it. But the cost, we have to keep up with and we haven't been doing it in the way we should. I think $4 a month, you know, I'm looking at the 220 range, 225 range, which might put a little bit more than $4, but not much. But that's what I'm looking at and, you know, where we will hear, where they're going to feel it is the businesses, because it's done on a percentage, it's very different. And you look at the numbers and you can see it. So I'm empathetic across the board, but $4 a month, to me, after six years of having no increase, it's not that bad. Vice Mayor Drosky?
Thank you, Mayor. Look, this isn't an easy decision either way we go. I mean, I see it from both sides and there hasn't been an increase in six years. If we were to do no increase or a minimal increase and continue to kick this can down the road, I mean, then we're really doing the residents a disservice then, because then they're really going to, then it's just going to get to the critical point where they're going to get whacked. And I don't want to do that. And I also don't want to increase it so small incrementally where we're doing this, you know, again and again and again. I mean, we like to say that we have the best, you know, fire department and the best firefighters and the best support staff and the best equipment and they have all the best training. It's one thing to say for that and then it's one thing to say, well, I don't want to pay for it. So we can't talk out of both sides of our mouth. We either want the best fire department or we don't want the best fire department. And that's what we're up against tonight. Whatever number we pick tonight, like it was said at the beginning of this presentation, is the maximum. So I would say that we err on the high side tonight, because we can always go down from there, but we can't go back up. So whatever number we pick, I think we should give ourselves some, you know, room to wiggle and negotiate, because we can't go up after we pick a number tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Parnas?
Let's remember that it's not $5 a month to $4 a month. It's one shot when you pay your taxes, like what goes with your property taxes. So I err on the side of caution. I agree that we should go a little higher than we really want, so that we have room to come down a little bit, but not much. I don't think $5 a month or $60 a year is outrageous for a beginning. And next year, we worry about next year. But I would hate to see us go up $150 this year, because I think it would hurt a lot of people, even though it's necessary. So I think your suggestion of $4, $5, $6 a month is reasonable and I would support it.
Commissioner Hudek and then Commissioner Preston?
And I think we're at the critical stage now. We've kicked this can far enough down. These fire stations are a mess and we, you know, there are serious issues that we're putting these individuals in. There's a, and I even forgot to mention that there's a hole in the stairway and, you know, someone can break an ankle pretty easy. These, this has to get done. And I think that, you know, looking at the nonprofits, maybe just at, you know, 25% of the commercial level, something, but their places burn as well and they require services as well. I know maybe not a lot of cities do that, but, you know, if the citizens don't want such a large increase, maybe that's another area that we can look at to alleviate some of the citizens. But at the end of the day, we've got to do something.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Preston?
I just wanted to ask Vice Mayor, you said about being on the high end, what's that number for you?
I would not go above 250. For tonight. I'm not at that number, by the way, for the final number. I don't know where I'm at for the final number.
Right.
Just upon this presentation tonight, but I would not be that high at the final number, but I would want to give us some of that room to negotiate. And to Commissioner Hudek's point, we're not going to buy a fire station with this fire assessment fee.
No, but we'll repair it somewhat.
Those days are gone, you know? There's not, I mean, you saw the capital improvement in here and we just don't have enough dollars, you know, to get new trucks, let alone to buy two new, two fire stations, which I totally agree need to be revamped, if not re, totally rebuilt. You know, you talked about the two on the beach, the one on Goolsby is portable, they're working out of, so, which was only supposed to be temporary, by the way, which is now turned into permanent. So we're not going to buy our way out of this mess by increasing, even if it's the full $301, which I'm not advocating for, even if we were to pick that, we're not buying our way out of this situation.
Mayor, whatever we do, we need to make some sort of an impact with whatever decision monetarily is made. And so, Mayor, I'm amenable to your idea.
So do we want to set the high water mark at 250 and work down from there? Or do we want to go lower on that high water mark?
I think 250 is the right number to start.
I agree. I'd say that's a good precaution.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Commission. The one thing that I do want to point out is that the rate that you set tonight as being, you know, obviously, I'm not, you can't go any higher, you can always go any lower, but I do want to just point out the schedule in terms of when you will be doing that second reading for the adoption, which would be September 12th. So for budgetary purposes, I, you can always, of course, go lower, but with the budget workshops coming up here just next week, us having to submit the budget and finalize that budget in July for getting that to you in August, it obviously makes it very difficult if the fire assessment fee is still a moving target up until that September 12th meeting. So I just would like for you to keep that in mind in terms of what you pass in the first reading and kindly request that, whatever that may be, be as close to what is adopted on that September 12th meeting as possible. Thank you.
We've heard 250. We're not negotiating with anybody, we're negotiating against ourselves, so, you know, whatever dollar amount you got, dollar amount you got, I don't want to sit there and say, gosh, we could have gone to 250 and we came out, we're heroes, we lowered it against, we're negotiating against ourselves, it's whatever the number we think is. But it depends on the number, realizing that if we get into the budget and we want to add things or subtract things, whatever happens, and fire, you know, there's things we want to add on and not cut necessarily, and we're not going to have the option of the fire assessment fee to cover that. So if you, if, let's not make it sound like we're negotiating on this, what it is, is do you want to give yourself flexibility as we get into those budget workshops? Should we have to go higher than what would be the $4 or $5 amount we talked about, which, you know, I mean, $5 a month is 245, okay? So we all talked four, that's kind of probably where we want to be a month for residents. But if something happens or something comes up and we see a need that, you know, we don't want to close that option off, but I think the city manager is telling us, let's not go high and then come really, really low, because he's going to be basing the budget on approximately the number we're coming in on. So I don't know, you want us to just say, this is the rate and that's it and we roll the dice?
Yes.
All right. So let's put it at, does everyone agree $4 a month? Okay? All right.
Yeah. I say $5 a month.
Okay.
Say just go 225.
$60, $60 max on top of the 175.
No, that's 50 bucks.
The fee is now 175.
So if you go 225.
If we go to $5 a month times 12, it's how much?
70.
60.
Here's 60, yes. Thank you. Is that what you want to put it in?
Yeah, that's what I would put it in. $60 a year more and then we could negotiate down at the meeting. But if we make it too low...
Yes, sir. Please.
I suspect we may both be...
My reasoning is this, we make it too low, we know that we're going to be going lower.
Right.
Okay, we know that that's not the amount. So if we make it too low to start with, we'll wind up with no increase or very little increase that won't cover the costs, won't even have a shot at covering some of the costs. So I say we go with $6 a month, $60 a...
That's 235.
235, yeah.
Right.
And you were going to say something?
So at 225, your actual revenue increase is $400,000, $500,000, I think? So it's not a huge revenue increase.
Exactly.
235, you're probably around a $1 million total revenue increase, which I don't, you're not going to actually realize all of that, I don't think. So just because of the way the call data shifted and the rate structure works, the residential rates are increasing more than the non-residential rates. So at 225, I don't think your commercial property owners actually see an increase, which is just the way the math works out. So just some things to keep in mind.
Gentlemen?
I'd like to know if we find out if we were to charge the nonprofits 25% of the commercial, what kind of an impact that could possibly have? And I know you don't have that answer now.
No, I can't give you an exact amount, but so the nonprofits are in the institutional category.
Okay. So 25% of that.
Which you absolutely can do that. I think you know, looking at the total amount, depending on the rate you choose, I think it's somewhere around $600,000, $700,000, so 25% of that. I think as was pointed out, I've seen this in other cases, that's going to fill up the commission chambers for sure. So it's something that you can keep in mind. I mean, I've seen busloads of individuals.
Oh, we've lived it. I've been here. It was fun. Lot of fun.
But on the other hand, they are using...
Okay, so do the residents want to go up to 300?
So, I mean, are they going to have busloads of residents or busloads of, you know?
It's just something to, to, to keep in mind there.
I, I do understand. It's not, not an easy decision.
One, one option to start charging those folks something, if you like to.
Yeah. I threw that out there as an option. I'm not suggesting we do that this year.
Okay.
If we want to start having those conversations for future years, then I think the conversation should start now. But putting it in place in the next couple of months is very different. So, you know, nonprofits, this is a, it is customary that they're not paying it and it would be a big change for them, so.
Then we go back to the 250.
Okay. Commissioner Preston and the city manager?
Well, I just wanted to say that if we were actually going to consider the nonprofits, then I'm not going to support it. I wouldn't support any, any of this because I don't want them involved at all now. We can begin to have those conversations and I don't know that I'm going to ever change from that, but we can entertain the conversations.
Were you up here when we did that? I remember. You want to talk about turning on a dime? That's the only time I've ever seen government turn on a dime. Boy, they switched their, everybody turned their, changed their mind on that pretty quickly and I was the last man standing on that one, so I've been there before. City manager?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that obviously, we don't have that information in terms of what that would do in terms of the revenue, based on different scenarios of putting a proportion of the cost to that institutional category. But one thing that we could do, once this rate is set, is just come back to you, Commissioner, and provide you with what that could look like under the, the new, the new structure that we have here. Because right now, until that rate is set, it's going to be very difficult to make that determination.
I'm going to throw out a suggestion to all of us. We have 150, let's just say 135. I'm sorry? Excuse me, thank you. It's late. Yes. 250. We do 235, it's $5 a month. Right? That gives us some room to come down if we need. So, you guys get to make the motion, it's up to you, whatever you want.
I'll make the motion.
Okay?
I'll take the heat and make a motion that the new fire rate fee be at 235 a year for residences.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I suspect, ultimately, what you have in your reso before you, I think, was the city manager's proposed at the $250 rate. And it's based on a percentage of funding, ultimately, how much you're going to fund the cost. So, I just wanted to point out, one, that whatever you change to the residential rate, there's going to be a corresponding change, the consultant can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's right.
There's going to be a corresponding change to the commercial rate. So, I know you have set parameters in front of you at 250, 225, 175. I don't know that you have that 235 set of numbers in front of you. If you're going to go that direction, that's fine. I just want to make sure it's clear on the record because ultimately, this reso will have to be updated with those new numbers. It's pretty simple to do on residential, you said 235. But ultimately, I suspect some calculations are going to be, need, need to be made for those other corresponding categories.
I would probably say 235 residential and corresponding non-residential rates.
Yeah, okay.
And then we can fill in that.
Right.
Fine.
And we can work down from there.
Okay. That's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second it. Not including the nonprofits.
No need for that.
We have a motion and a second. I believe we need to open this up to the public, don't we?
Yep.
So, after you've heard all that, anyone who'd like to comment on this item number?
Glenn Sullivan, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I'm supportive of a rate that will, even at 250, you're not going to cover your fire rescue. Every citizen is, is gaining the services here. It's not a matter of the cost of the house or whatever. So, every citizen should pay their fair share for this. But I also think that when you do develop the budget, if you develop it based on 250, you show the corresponding savings in the ed velorem and other taxes. And if there are needs, if the, the fire costs go up, BSO fire costs go up, or if there are things in the CPI that need to be funded, just show us. I mean, I understand that things aren't static. Give us the, the 250 makes sense. It's still not funding it fully. But just show the corresponding changes to the, the general fund budget, where we were previously funding that shortfall with ed velorem and all the other taxes. What was that delta and what are you going to use it for? Hopefully, to reduce taxes, but there are other things that need to be used for, so.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I know we should have a guy with a portable mic. People don't have to get up.
Gwen Clark Reed, 1430 Southwest Sixth Way. You are saying that you want to go up $5 a month on the, on the fire assessment fee?
Right.
So, that's $60 a year added to the 175 that we're already paying. So, come to 235. As far as the commercial, the businesses, how does this affect, go, tell me this thing about the businesses again. The businesses would be assessed what?
It depends on their square footage.
The square footage? Okay. And then if we wanted to do something with the nonprofits?
That's not being proposed right now.
Well, you can say it's not being proposed.
It would be on square footage.
No, no. I'm, I'm, I'm saying, I'm going back to the nonprofits.
Yes, ma'am.
You're saying that you're not proposing that right now. But if that is the only way we can keep this number down at a number that is, you know, people can afford to pay, we have to look at that. I know it's not, I know it's not, you know, the thing that we want to swallow, Commissioner Preston. And I can understand why you're not wanting, you know, maybe not wanting to go there. But you have to look at this across the board, you know? If everybody has to take a bite out of the apple.
Well, thank you. Anyone else from the public? I'm going to close it to the public. I, I will say this, my understanding, my recollection, when we did this previously and we considered nonprofits, if you were to do this in the future, and we're not doing it now, just to be very clear, is that you couldn't charge them the same as the res, flat fee as the residential. Because I think every nonprofit would have, wouldn't have a problem paying $250 a year for fire safety. But that's not the way it's allowed. Is that, is that correct? They have to be treated in the institutional category and that rate is based on square footage, similar to what it is for the commercial and the industrial. And, and I'll give you an idea, when we decided to do that and we were going to put that in place, I think it was St. Ambrose at the time, it was a $60,000 hit for the year for them. So, that was stunning. And they were upset and rightfully so. It, it made sense. Now, the problem was, rather than us backing down on that and coming up with a percentage that would have made sense and would have been more cost feasible, because I'm sure most of the nonprofits don't have a problem paying a little bit, is that we didn't do that. We just said, forget it, we're not going to do it because the outrage is pretty intense. I don't think that was necessarily the right thing to do. It's, it's worthy of looking into. But I will tell you this, this short window of doing it now to win the time we approve the budget for any nonprofit, it's unfair. If we're going to do it, let's talk about it now, start the ball rolling and look at it for next year. If we're going to do that, and that means community outreach and involving the nonprofits so they have an understanding what, where the sweet spot might be. Every one of them is going to be hit differently because it is based on square footage. So, if that's something you want to consider in the future, I, I don't recommend it this budget and I think we've all agreed on that. And, but if we're going to look at it in the future, the conversation and those numbers probably need to be run now and we start having the conversation early rather than later for next budget. Vice Mayor Drosky?
I, I just wanted to be clear that I was not, and I would not support nonprofits in this fire assessment fee and I'm very much against it for future fire assessment fees as well.
Okay. Commissioner Hudak?
I still would like to see, you know, if it was 25% of the industrial rate, what we were looking at.
I'll take 1%. I'll start very small. I've been here, man, I, I've seen this. Trust me.
Okay, go 10%. Let's just see what it would look like.
But, yeah, the, the numbers are numbers. We certainly, you know, that's, I'm sure they can run that. Commissioner Parnas?
I really don't understand the opposition to nonprofits. If their building's on fire, we have people who go risk their lives. They pay for electricity, they pay for water, they pay for sewage. Even if it's a small amount, I don't see what the objection is. They have a building, they have property and so do I, so do you. We pay. And they're paying, if we do it, a small percentage of what everybody else pays, why not? That, that's my, why shouldn't they pay something for the services they get?
Well, like I said, we're not, we're not getting into that tonight, for sure. But we'll have plenty of time to get into it. You want to keep going? Or are you going to wrap it up? Go for it. Okay.
But I'll tell you, Commissioner, you know, I've been in this chamber when people are saying, why are the people in Century Village not paying water like I'm paying it? So, you have those arguments come up, that's my point. So, so. Well, hey, but, but, well, but you have moved to Megan Bay. So, I'm just saying, you know, there are a lot of different ways to look at things and there's a lot of people have argued that point, that they should pay, and you're saying they should pay something, but it's been argued that point from the other side.
That has, but I will say that it's been proven historically inaccurate because it's based on an agreement that was there. But your point is, is spot on, is that there were, Century Village, your, your district would be one of the first that people would look at and say they're not paying their proportion of taxes. Right or wrong, but that's certainly an argument we have heard.
Yeah.
You know, but, but yeah, and you know that. So, so I, to your point, we've heard that, yeah. So, we have a motion and a second for the $235 amount. Is that correct?
Correct.
Pardon?
235.
235, is that what I said?
Yeah.
That's what I said and that's what the motion was, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the corresponding non-residential rate change.
Correct. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Item number 18 is a resolution of the City of Commission in the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, relating to the collection of nuisance abatement service assessments, adopting findings of fact, directing the preparation of assessment role, providing for notice and providing for effective date.
Is there anyone from the public who'd care to comment on this item? I'm going to close it to the public, Commissioner.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Hudak, second from Commissioner Parnas. Vice Mayor Drosky, did you have a comment before we call the roll?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. This is your, this is your brainchild. This goes back to when you were first elected 10 years ago for instituting this ordinance and collecting this fee. And 10 years later, it's still running strong. So, thank you for keeping, you know, fighting the hard fight all these years.
No, thank you. Yeah, it's, it's sad that we keep having to do it, but it's good that we have it in place because it's nice that we're recouping those funds, so thank you. If we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
I believe we already heard items 19, 20, and 21, so I think we're at comments by administration and legal.
City attorney?
I have no, no further comments for today.
I apologize, but I do, I've been asked to provide a recycling update. I do have Chad Gressik here to provide that update and I'll ask that he be brief. Thank you.
Yes, I will be brief. Good evening, Chad Gressik, Director of Sustainable Management. As you are aware, a couple of months ago, we provided an update on our recycling program. Tonight, I have a couple more updates to provide to you. Just to go back in history a little bit, in September, we entered into contract with Waste Management. That contract initially had an 18% contamination cap, which expired in February. And then there was a, a cap that they also allowed us to utilize that's expiring at the end of this month. And so, in July, we will be paying our actual contamination rate. To recap, the education outreach efforts, as you know, we had a pretty involved, multi-week social media campaign. We mailed out a lot of decals and brochures and informational packages to the residents to try to educate them on recycling right. We had our Ricky, the Recycling Ranger program. And to date, we conducted over 30 education outreach events to, again, educate the, the public on the new recycling program. We began some audits since October, mainly focused on the multifamily and commercial segments. Every time we audited a facility, we would provide them education, information, and outreach, specifically to the, to the owners of those facilities, most of the time, the, the property managers. After three audits, unfortunately, the average of the containers that have been contaminated has exceeded 75%.
75?
Correct. And to date, 87 multifamily recycled containers have been removed from our system because of excessive contamination. And preliminary audits of the commercial program suggest similar trends, unfortunately. The global trends, there's still a lot of volatility. There has not been a, a bottom, unfortunately. The numbers continue to drop. The numbers that we want to see go up continue to go the opposite direction. The values continue to be volatile. And unfortunately, after we, we saw an initial decrease in contamination, the rates are creeping back up. So, just to, you've probably seen this table before. This goes through the initiation of our new contract with Waste Management, starting in September of last year. You can see, this table provides a variety of information regarding the amount of material we collected, the cost we were paying at the time, what that total monthly cost would be, the contamination percentage, what the cost would be if we disposed the material as garbage, and, and the difference between those two numbers. As you see, when we go from September through where we are today, those numbers are trending in, in the wrong direction. And, and as you can see in June and July, we are seeing a significant jump in what we would be paying per ton to process this material. So, in September, we were at about $11. We're projecting in July to be at $75, which is about $34 more per ton that we pay to dispose, but it's garbage. Again, this is a graph just to show how much of the tonnage we've collected. We do see, we do expect to see a bit of a drop there because of the fact that we're removing containers out of the system. So, that will certainly help the overall calculation. This graph just shows you the, the tonnage by segment. So, you may recall when we initially started talking about this, that we felt that the largest issue wasn't a multifamily segment, and it was. But if you look at a volume standpoint, most of the volume is in the curbside segment. So, that's really where the, the issue lies, unfortunately. Contamination, as I mentioned, we saw a nice little dip initially, but unfortunately, it's starting to creep back up. We're, we're about at 41% right now. So, 41% of the materials that we collect is unusable, is considered garbage. If you look at the cost per ton, two tables here, you can see the progression, the exponential growth in the cost and then the corresponding exponential growth in the monthly cost. Again, in July, we're projecting about a $37,000 bill to process this material. Again, on the inverse, when you look at disposal versus tipping fee avoidance, so, you know, when you're, when you're sending this material to be recycled or processed, ideally, you want to do it at a lower rate than what you're paying to throw it out as garbage. Initially, we were still on the positive side, but, but as you can see, we're now projecting to be in a deficit as you compare those two rates. to be in a deficit as you compare those two rates. Short and long-term solutions, again, we're going to continue to do our education outreach efforts. We have begun to, you know, do more advanced audits. We are hoping to begin to do some level of residential audits in October. We are going to continue to do our multifamily and, and commercial audits. We also are into Century Village now, auditing those containers. And again, whenever we find continual contamination, we will remove those containers out of the system.
Good.
But of course, we're trying to educate those individuals prior to doing that. Obviously, we've discussed the need to look at our rates for recycling and our solid waste rates as a whole. The alternative, if you do not want to adjust the rates, is to adjust the service levels. Those are, those are two items that we'll discuss in great detail next week in our budget workshop. Obviously, we're going to continue to look for other options. There are some potential short-term options that may be coming up, so as soon as those materialize, we will bring those forward. And, and as you know, in the past, we've also discussed the possibility of the city looking at building its own facility, which would give us greater flexibility in addressing some of these short-term issues. And with that, I'll address any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Hudak?
Thank you very much for the report, Chad. Really appreciate it. So, is there a way that maybe we, we limit the, the, the products that we recycle? Is there like, is, is paper more profitable than plastic, or is glass more profitable? And then just say, "Hey, the only thing we're recycling is paper," you know, so the education is, is a lot less cumbersome than, you know, it's got to be this type of plastic, and it's got to have, you know, this cleaned out and all, I mean, is, is that another option? So that we're not eliminating recycling, because that's kind of where we're going. But if we maybe just, you know, have a, a limited recycle program where it's just newspaper, or, I'm just throwing something out, but just an idea.
Yeah, your, your metals are obviously your, your most valuable material, so some metals will definitely stay in the program. Glass, there really is no value to glass. My only suggestion on that is if you do take it out, it's got to be out for good. You can't come back a couple of years and say, "Oh, you know, we're going to..."
Yeah, maybe we just go with aluminum.
Yeah, so I mean, that's certainly something that we can explore in more detail. I don't think it's going to solve the problem. It may help it a little bit, but ideally, you know, the, the solution is addressing contamination at the source, and, and if we can't address it at the source, maybe there's a way that we can address it on the other end, but, you know, it's, it's definitely a difficult nut to crack. And, you know, we certainly saw what, what the ramifications were when we decided to halt the program, so I'm certainly not advocating that by any means. There's got to be something, hopefully, in the middle that we can work with everybody to be able to digest, and hopefully, it's just a short-term issue, but, you know, nobody has a crystal ball, and nobody knows how long this is going to continue the way it's going.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, we're truly at a crossroads, and, and this isn't a surprise. We either continue our recycling program, or we dispose of our recycling as garbage. That's the crossroads where we're at. Now, I will tell you, from the, when we halted our recycling program, the phone calls and emails that I got, which are probably the same phone calls and emails that Mayor and Commissioner Parnas also received, we're overwhelmingly in favor of keeping our recycling program. So at this crossroads, I would not choose the path that leads to ending our recycling program. So, where does that take us now? This takes us down the road. I think we need a hybrid of these solutions. I think we need to look at and modify the rates and not study this for the next year. We need to do it now, by fall. We need to up our education outreach. Me and staff going to a homeowners association with 12 people is not going to cut it anymore. We need to up our game, you know, and it's nothing against, you know, Chad, or nothing against our IT department, but I don't, and, and Ricky the Recycling Ranger, I think we need to be more aggressive. We need to think outside the box, we need to be more aggressive, and somehow reach out to our residents. Whatever we did, didn't work. You saw the rates right there. I mean, it took a small dip the first month, and then it went right back up to 41%, and that's unacceptable. I mean, to me, it's personally deflating. How many meetings did I go to trying to get this message out, and we're at the same place that we were before? So obviously, that message didn't resonate. And then, we need to, you know, we talked about doing curbside enforcement, having, you know, checking containers, finding out who the culprits are. Tampa has a project where three strikes and you're, you're out, but we need to be more aggressive, and we need to be more aggressive now, or this isn't going to work. It's not going to work. And, you know, I'm not one for failure, and I'm not one for, you know, charging the residents a lot more money when we have controls that are in our, in our place. I mean, is it going to cost money to do more education? Probably a more professional way, yes, but you're spending money to, to save money in the, in the long run. So if we're going to do it, let's do it right, let's do it aggressive, and let's do it now.
Commissioner Parnas?
Unfortunately, in multi-dwellings, which a good deal of my constituents are, there are rentals, and there are people that are vacationing, and obviously, they just don't care. And it's very difficult to police multi-dwelling. I didn't do it, must be somebody from another building. That's the attitude. And we've been knocking our brains out for months trying to educate people, and the rate is right where it was. And I don't know that there is a solution. If people don't care, maybe stopping it for a while and letting them pay more, and so their monthly fees go up, they'll realize that, hey, why am I paying more? Well, you want it to stop, you got to recycle properly. You can't continually contaminate it. I've been to the recycling plant, and I've seen what people count as recycling: clothing, garbage, plasticware that doesn't belong there, bulldozers loaded with it, in piles, and then where does it go? To the fill. I don't know what the solution is, but I see it, and I, we try and try and try to reach these people, they don't care. They just don't care. So either we get it very aggressive, as Todd says, give it one last shot to win, or we give up on it and move on. But there's no reason to constantly pay contaminated rates. It's costing everybody more money. People don't want to recycle, then you can't make them. The bottom line is they don't care. And I don't know what the solution is.
Commissioner Hudak?
One of the challenges, you know, I do think a vast majority of the residents do care. I think one of the things that we have to remember is, is that we do have a lot of rentals, well, we do have a, a lot of tourists that come down here, and I would think that they're part of the problem as well. I don't think it's just the residents. Yeah, there's a portion of the residents who, who, you know, after a month or so, they go back to their regular routine. I think there's a large portion of the residents who do care, but I do think that, you know, being a tourist destination, that's one of the adverse aspects of that.
Okay. The, I think our efforts did pay off, and I, and I think we got people's attention when we stopped recycling. We put forward a fantastic program, which I just recently shared with other cities, because I've been meeting with some of the other mayors of other cities in Broward County, talking about some of the bigger issues we have with either recycling, plastic bag usage, straw bans, different things like that. And they were really impressed with what we do with Ricky the Recycling Ranger. We should be proud of it, and the numbers showed that we got people's attention. They paid it, and, and it worked, but then we let off on it, and just, this is the reality of what the world we live in, people's attention spans are extraordinarily short.
Agreed.
So it has to be constant, and it has to change, and it has to diversify. So, your point's very well taken, that it's a, it's a multi-pronged effect. If you want to start hitting the rentals hard, find the people who are renting the property when they're, and we do, we hit them hard with going through and doing an audit on what they have, and hit them hard. And I can guarantee you, if you've ever rented at any place that they're strict on it, they will have rules, that they will penalize their renters for not following the rules, because they're going to be paying it. So that's a place to start. There are different things that we can do. At this point, I think we need to get their attention through punitive methodology.
And, and right now, we do not charge multifamily properties for recycling.
So, we need, we need to kind of reassess that and take a look at it, but we can get their attention through further education, and I think we need to revive, get Ricky Dust off his cave, come out of retirement. Poor kid's probably 16 years old by now, it seems like we've been in this for so long, but we, we need to up our game. We need to change it up, diversify, but I think punitive measures is one of the ways that we go to get people's attention again. And this recycling problem's not coming away, we know that, and, and other cities are facing it, and, and some of them are facing it worse than we are. So we need to work through it and figure out a way to get their attention on it. I, I do want to thank you for the efforts on it and, and for this information. I will say something that we need to watch also in the state legislature, and it was almost passed, and I was talking to Commissioner Mike, or Mayor Mike Ryan from Sunrise, and Dan Stermer from Weston, we were talking about this, is that it was piggybacked onto the, the straw ban that was on there, that would not allow municipalities to audit the audit findings by the provider. So in other words, we had to take their word for it. "Oh yeah, you're contaminated, trust us," and that was going to be it.
Yep.
That was tacked on to that, and when it got killed by the governor, that killed it. Otherwise, we'd have been stuck with that with no ability to police, you know, the people that are supposedly policing us, that are making a profit on policing us. So, we need to watch out for that. That will, I'm sure, come up in the next legislative session, so please be aware of that. But thank you, Chad.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else want to keep us here longer? Anyone else? Just kidding, Chad, it was great information. Commissioner Hudak?
I'll talk quick. I want to get out of here before Wednesday as well. First thing is, is after our last commission meeting, I think it was the following day, I received my water quality report at my house. Mr. Good and his department, I want to thank you, and once again, it shows that the quality of water in Deerfield Beach is some of the best in this country. So I know there was a lot of rigmarole about the quality of our water, but once again, the proof is in the pudding. I want to congratulate Deerfield Beach in achieving a Guinness Book of World Record on Saturday. It was a tremendous event. I know Patrick and Chad were out there as well. 633 divers, in the span of about an hour and an hour and a half, collected over 2,072 pounds of trash right around our, our pier. So it was an amazing event. It took Egypt 24 hours to achieve the world record in 2015, and within an hour and a half, Deerfield Beach beat it. So we are now the, the record holders for the largest underwater beach cleanup in the world, and I think that's tremendous. The next commission meeting on July 12th, uh, July 2nd, I will not be here, I will be in New York. I want to go ahead and make that announcement, and whatever it is we need to do, I will do. My father's having a procedure, and I want to be up there for him for that. And I'm done.
Thank you. Commissioner Preston?
First of all, I just want to ask everyone to say a prayer for, I'd like to thank the mayor, first of all, for the first part of the meeting, acknowledging that Sylvia Portier is ill, she's had some medical issues. She was a mayor here and former commissioner, so just say a prayer for her, please. We had a wing cook-off this past Saturday, and it was a tremendous success, so much so that there were different, so many different residents came to me and said, "Why can't we do something like this?" And I'll tell you why it was good. You had people from all of the districts, and actually, some people from out of town, the bounce houses for the kids, so that was, it actually was a wing cook-off, but it was actually a fun day for the City of Deerfield Beach. All the different districts come out and, and having fun, kids playing together, it was a really nice thing. So I'm going to ask that we do a chicken and a rib cook-off, and same sort of thing. I mean, it's, it's something that we can do, and it promotes harmony, getting the different districts to come out and, and just share. A while back, I had said to, you know, you guys know that I brought up when the city manager announced that he had picked Mr. Good for the assistant city manager's position, and my challenges were, you know, people who should have been given that opportunity. But I want to just say that Mr. Good has, you know, everything that I've asked him to do, he has done really well. I mean, he gets back to me in a timely, he gets back to me timely, and he really seeks to solve the issues, whatever they may be, and I want to thank him for, for you doing that. You've done good, and I really appreciate that. Preston Pooser, is he here? No, I think he went to bed. But, but Preston, and I love his name. No, I'm serious, he's a really nice name, and, but, you know, he came here, he's our new Parks and Recs director, he's got some good ideas, and even when he didn't know that I was the district commissioner, he was just talking to me and looking around and engaging people and trying to, he, he's come here, and he's really doing a good job. Preston Pooser is a good, is a good person, he's doing a good job, and I think we should just give him some support and just continue to welcome him. A lot of people come in sometime from different places, you put them in a position, and they can academically qualify for that position, but a lot of time, you, if you hear them talk, you don't hear passion. Not only is he qualified, if you listen to his conversation, he has some passion, he cares about the people in the community, and, and he has personally mentioned to me of, you know, how he wants to go into each district and, and take a look at some things, and I, I like, you know, that type of conversation. I think he's going to do a good job for the City of Deerfield Beach.
Excellent. Commissioner Parnas?
Good night, everybody.
Vice Mayor Drosky? Wow, way to play to the crowd, nice. Vice Mayor Drosky?
Thank you, Mayor. I brought it up at our CRA meeting, but I do want to reiterate it tonight, that the county commission voted nine to zero to fund our artificial reef project for the remaining balance of $150. Chad, thank you again, and your team, and Patrick, for job well done. Patrick made the presentation at the Tourism Development Council meeting, and attended the meeting with Stacy Ritter as well to help seal the deal, attended the county commission meeting to see it all the way through, so thank you very much. Job, job well done. I, I'm also on the Leadership Council for the Greater Fort Lauderdale Alliance, and we have a quarterly meeting, and we had our quarterly meeting this morning at Gray Robinson, a large law firm in Fort Lauderdale, and the topic of conversation for today's meeting was, and I haven't even had a chance to talk to the city attorney about this yet, was medical marijuana, and it was basically, you know, to the business leaders that were there, explaining to them what's going on in the, in the state of Florida, and Gray Robinson and their... And Gray Robinson and their attorneys are a player in the field for this particular subject, and their attorneys are convinced, where I'm going with is, their attorneys are convinced that recreational marijuana is not only coming, but it's coming soon. They are convinced of that, and they are, you know, warning their clients and telling them to get ready. And so, as a city, we should probably do the same, and it trickles down, not just from the dispensaries and where they're located, but all the businesses that are ancillary, you know, tied to them. You have the distributors, you have the truck drivers, you have the, you know, the credit card machines. You know, you can't use them now, but all of the businesses that, you know, will prop, pop, prop up, easy for me to say, around this are going to come into play. So we need to take a look at that now. We need to take a look at, you know, other states and how they've handled the situation, because we're going to have other businesses come into our city wanting to set up, you know, shop, and we need to be prepared and have a strategy now and not wait, because according to these attorneys, it's coming, and it's coming soon. So it's something that I think we should take a look at. Commissioner Preston, thank you again for mentioning the wing festival this past weekend. I was lucky enough to be a judge at that contest. I will volunteer to be a judge at your chicken and your rib one as well, and if you want to throw brisket, have a brisket one as well, I will judge that.
You're such a giver.
I will judge that as well, and I will say, they had one called the Reaper, and I swear that my tongue, lips, and mouth were probably paralyzed for ten to fifteen minutes after one small bite from that. It was, it was powerful.
We may need some of that here at the commission meetings, actually.
Yes.
But other than that, I will see everyone at the next meeting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I do want to thank you also for your representation on our code committee for Southwest Tenth Street. You've been at that from a private citizen all the way through, and your leadership on there, because I don't get to talk at those meetings, but you nail it out of the park every time, and you really represent the city well, so outstanding job that you're doing with that. With that said, in July, and I believe it's the 11th...
10th.
Oh, excuse me, the 10th.
It is the 10th.
There's going to be a presentation by the, by FDOT regarding Southwest Tenth Street. I am anticipating that date changing, but in, just in case, we will need to be ready and have people there, and we'll be courting with staff to make sure that people are there to find out what their update is for all of us, those of us who've been a part of the code committee, have been to those meetings. There's a lot of frustration on our end about what is transpiring and where this project was supposed to be, and where it's at now is concerning, but we're going to keep at it and keep doing what we're doing, but again, thank you, Vice Mayor. On July 5th, the 5th of July, we will have a beach cleanup over at the Chicky Huts across from the fire station at our beach, to keep up the great work that everybody's out there doing from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. The Marine Advisory Board will be seeking our public input for comprehensive beach management plan on June 20th, that's right around the corner here, on Thursday at 6:00 PM, so the public, please come out and share your thoughts and your opinions on that. I do want to give you an update regarding Launch Code, and again, I want to thank the Economic Development Council, and I know Dame Rentz is still here. Outstanding job in bringing this and giving you an update. The period ends on June 23rd. The program so far has received four hundred and seventy applicants. Of these, two hundred have passed the basic eligibility requirements. Of these, Launch Code further qualified a group of sixty applicants who fit into ten areas of proficiency required by employers. Of this sixty, eleven are Deerfield Beach residents, one person shy of our twenty percent mark. The return on the investment of the city's $10,000 to create eleven jobs, paying at least $40,000 a year, is certainly worthwhile, so that is money really well spent, so I do want to thank all of them. Again, thank you, staff, for everything that you do, and we appreciate it. I think that is everything I have, and I really hope it is. Yes?
We only got a half hour to go. Let's, come on, let's get tough. Let's go, let's go.
You want to keep going? I keep pushing? I'll keep pushing? All right.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned.